Acting public meetings remotely by conference call, video conference, or other technologies. A copy of the full text of Executive Order Number 7B1 is available for review on the Town and Monroe website, www.menroec Connecticut.org. Accordingly, the Monroe Board of Education has selected Zoom as the preferred technology application to conduct remote public meetings in compliance with state law. This technology will permit up to 500 members of the public to participate in real time in the public meeting via computer, tablet, smartphone, or telephone via the access information set forth on this meeting agenda. It is highly recommended that any interested participant download and utilize Zoom software application prior to the commencement of the meeting. Each meeting will have unique participation information, including access code and live link. Please be sure you are accessing the correct information for the correct meeting. Lastly, any member of the public who desires to submit written information relative to the business set forth on the agenda may do so up to one hour in advance of the meeting via electronic mail to the address set forth on this meeting agenda. Notice this hereby given that this remote electronic public meeting shall permit the public to view, listen, and when permitted by the agenda and/or the chairman, participate in real time in the meeting. Be recorded and posted to the Board of Education's website within seven days. Be made available to the public within a reasonable time. In addition to standard parliamentary procedures outlined on this agenda, the following special rules shall apply to all participants. Please mute your microphone so to reduce background noise at any time you're not speaking. Prior to speaking, on occasion, each speaker shall clearly state their name and title for the record. The use of the chat is prohibited and will not be considered during this meeting if on a public meeting at any one time. Access is granted solely by Zoom technology on a first come, first served basis and is not within the control of the Board of Education. Thank you for your patience. We will move on with the first item on our agenda, which is, sorry, number four item on our agenda, which is the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Hi.
Okay, I have a motion by Jerry, a second by Shannon. Joe, did you want to talk about any of the notification of appointments?
I would absolutely love to. First, first we have Marissa Memmely, who is being appointed as our secondary instructional leader. Marissa was actually a graduate of Massey. She's worked as a, she worked as a special education teacher in Bridgeport for seven years before returning back with us in 2017. Marissa's done a great job creating some strong relationships with students, parents, families, and admirably assumed the additional responsibility of chairing PPTs at Jackie Hollow last year when we had some reshuffling in the special education department. I think that experience really prepared her for this role. So we're happy to have Marissa. The next guy, you may remember the name, it's not a typo, John Batista, who I will be forever indebted to. Really want to thank John. As the, the search for a Massey principal got underway, it became apparent that we wouldn't have a replacement for Jake by August 1st when he was leaving. So I called my good friend, John Batista. And John, in his always giving way, is going to help out and serve as the interim principal. He's working with the high school team with Jake on the reopening plan. And we'll also help transition once we have our new high school principal, which we have, you know, just to keep everybody apprised. We have interviews slated for next week. So thank you to John. And then our last one is Reagan Smith. Reagan fills a vacant spot created by eighth grade Jackie Hollow math teacher Samantha Jennings, who had to relocate back to California. Reagan taught middle school math in New Jersey and Texas before raising a family of her own. She came back to teaching. This past year, she served as a long-term substitute teacher for us. And we're welcome to welcome her onboard. One quick correction here. Reagan will be teaching at Jackie Hollow, not STEM. So she actually just came off a long-term substitute assignment at STEM, but she'll be at Jackie Hollow in the, in the fall. And I think we may have lost, no, are you still there, Donna? Oh, you're on, you're on mute.
Yep, I'm still here, I'm sorry. Anything else?
Nope, that was it.
Okay, so I have a motion by Jerry, a second by Shannon, to approve the consent agenda. I will just go around to all the different board members. George had texted me earlier, I'm not sure if he's on. He was going to be a little late to this evening's meeting. But Shannon?
Hi.
Jerry?
Hi.
Dave?
Hi.
Alan?
Hi.
Jeff?
Hi.
Christine? Okay, I guess Christine's not on. Or Nick?
Hi. Sorry, I couldn't get off mute.
That's okay, that's okay, that happens. All right, we will move on. So I'm an I too, so motion passes, thank you. We will move on to our reports of our committees and liaisons. Does anybody this evening have a report?
I do, Donna.
Thank you, David. Go ahead.
Thank you, Donna. I just want to let you know that the pension committee met last Thursday on the 23rd. Joe, Nick, and I were there. Happy to report that our BOE pension fund is just over 92% funded, and there were no major votes. So thank you for those that attended with me.
Great, thank you, Dave. Does anybody else have any? All right, hearing none, we will move on to the report of our acting superintendent. So Joe, you are up.
Thanks, Donna. I'm gonna just share my screen for a minute. I want to just start by sharing, we have done a, an initial reopening survey to get, to gauge some response from the community on what their plans are for the, you know, for the fall. We know that this could very well change based on, you know, A, what people hear tonight and whatnot. But it was important for us as we started to gather some information and started to do some of our reopening work that we had this. So let me just share this with you really quickly. So as you can see, we had a huge response. I mean, we had, it's got to be close to 100% response. And I really want to thank everybody who responded. I also want to thank a lot of people for getting the word out, especially a lot of our parents who have served on the reopening committee. They, they did a really nice job making sure that the word got out via social media, Facebook, and whatnot. So just kind of share this with you really quickly. You know, of all the respondees, this is kind of how it broke down by school, which kind of makes sense. Massey's the biggest school, Jackie Hollow, Bob Ifon Hollow, Stepney and Monroeal. So a good, good sample size there. We had to ask, we had to break this next question up into two. And there's going to be additional surveys coming that are going to be more specific. I'll talk about that a little bit later. This was just to start to give us some ideas, you know, on initial responses. So Monroe Elementary, we just asked what grade the students were, were coming into. So this is different than the other two elementary schools because Monroeal has the pre-K class there. So kindergarten, you know, these are the respondents that came in by grade, I'm sorry, first, second, third, and fourth. At the other, at the other two elementary schools, again, a pretty good, a pretty good smattering around. Did not get as many kindergarten folks, and that's probably because this was before Power Schools rolled over. So we may have missed some of them. Power School has been rolled over. It was actually rolled over today. So any other, you know, really the critical surveys that are going to come out are going to come out now. We're meeting as an administrative team tomorrow. But now we've got to get the nitty gritty. You know, is, you know, Suzie Jones coming to, coming to school in the fall? Again, good representation at, in the middle school, you know, pretty even distribution, same thing at the high school, you know, almost 25% per grade. So here's some of the initial information we grabbed. The first thing was asking folks, would they be able to bring a laptop or Chromebook to school? You see overwhelmingly about 78.9% said they could. You know, 13.4% said they could not. And some, you know, 7.7% said that they would be interested in purchasing one. This is important information for us as we plan for the capacity to be able to go one-to-one, you know, between students' own devices and the devices that we have available to us. You know, we should be able to outfit every student in the, in the district. The, this question is actually, I don't know why it's, it was asked. I think it was asked in a different order, but for some reason it showed up here. This is one of the most important questions, which was, you know, do you intend to send your students back? And we had about, you know, 88.5 large, large, large number of parents intend to send their students back. I'll make a caveat on this, on the no's, the folks who said they were not going to send their kids back. A lot of them, when they put their responses in below, did say that they were not sure. And we didn't have an unsure choice here. And again, we're going to get this more granular data with the district, with the, I'm sorry, with the individual school surveys. So this was very important to us. And again, not every no was, was a hard no. We asked people to explain why they said no. And you could imagine what the answers were. A lot of them were concerned about being able to follow all of the, you know, health protocols, social distancing. There were a lot of families that care for elderly, you know, parents or grandparents. There's people that are sick. There are students that have underlying health conditions. So all those factors factored into these 380 responses. So I'm not going to go through that, but that's a, pretty much a summary of those. This is very important information for us. You know, we know that, you know, the buses are going to be an area that we're concerned about. And so we asked folks if they'd be willing to drive their kids to and from school to promote social distancing. You know, 62% of families said that they, you know, they would be willing to drive the child to and from school. So, you know, it's good for us from a busing standpoint. It will create other logistic issues that we're going to have to deal with, obviously, namely traffic. And we'll talk about, we'll talk about that later when we get into the plan. We asked if, if folks could provide a mask for their child. I think we're at a point in society right now where, you know, you can't go into any establishment without a mask. So most of the people have masks already. If they are returning to school in the fall, will they be bringing their own lunch? Almost half the students will be bringing it. And then when you couple that with the students that will bring it on other days, you know, not necessarily every day, looks like we're going to have a large number of students that will be bringing their own lunch. That'll be important information for SEDEXO as we move forward. We did ask, you know, when we get to the, when we get to the presentation on the reopening plan, there is an option to opt for temporary remote learning for your child. So we did, so we asked this question, if your child is not returning to school, will they still require food services? We do have, you know, small number that would, that would be impacted there. And we will obviously share that with SEDEXO as well. You know, very important, if we are back in a situation where we are on, where we have to, you know, rely on technology and for distance learning, we're going to have to, we're going to have to make sure that folks have reliable Wi-Fi access. And, you know, thankfully, you know, the overwhelming number of people do. But there's a, there is a, there's a group of folks out there that do not have reliable Wi-Fi access, and we'll have to work with those families. And then, again, this goes back to the other question. This one was, the, the previous question about having a laptop was, you know, I, I have to correct myself there. The previous question on the laptop was 612. This question on a laptop is for all students K12. But same, same general message, if they could, if they had the accessibility, I'm sorry, they have, we have enough accessibility that we'll be able to supplement the students in the district that do not have, you know, do not have laptops with our own devices, mainly Chromebooks. Does anyone have any, any questions on the, on that survey at all? And we'll probably hit a lot of these topics when we go into the, the reopening plan, so, but it's up to you.
Does any of the board members have any questions for Joe on this? All right, Joe, continue on.
All right, just a quick, the, the second item here is the reopening plan update. You know, we're going to be sharing an executive summary of the, of the plan tonight. Just to give you a little background on it, the framework that we used came from one of our regional education service centers at Advance. The plan itself is 75 pages long. The reopening committee officially started working on the plan following the guidance from the State Department of Education, which was released on June 29th. We had pretty much, you know, it was due July 24th. So we had less than a month to put it together. And you'll see again during the executive summary. But I do want to, you know, thank, I'll thank them again, but I want to thank all the volunteers that served on it, on the committee. And I also really want to thank the administrators, who had already started doing a lot of this work. They did a lot of the front-end work, especially surveying teachers, students, and parents in the spring, probably in late, late May. Just to find out, you know, as we begin to prepare for the fall, knowing that there's, you know, a good reality that we're going to be back out at some point in the future. Just surveying, like I said, parents, teachers, students, to find out, you know, what worked and what didn't work. Where are the strengths, where are the weaknesses, and where can we improve, and how are we going to make it better? The, the document itself is what I would call a living document. It, it will evolve and it will change as we move to the start of the school year. I submitted this thing on Friday, sent it out to families. That was the next message that went out on School Messenger. And, you know, if you've paid attention to some comments that have been made at the state level by the governor, you know, in the last 24 hours, things have changed, the spirit of the plan to some extent. But we'll roll with it. It is definitely, there's a little bit different direction from the state on this now. And we'll talk about that when we get into the, the plan. But I anticipate this being the case. I'm going to, I'll say it now, I'll say it, you know, probably three more times as we do the executive summary. This thing is, is going to change. Health indicators are going to change. Best practices are going to change. There's, there's going to be things. So, you know, we're committed to changing with that. That's why I said this is kind of a living document. As we get feedback from parents and families, and there's things that we can do to enhance the, the program, we will. So that's it on the, the reopening plan. Again, I, I think if you hold your questions till the executive summary is done, that would probably, we may answer a lot of those questions there. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Ron just to talk about the, the review of the fund activity statement and the finance update.
Okay, so I was going to collapse these two. I'll give a rough, brief analysis, discussion of the year-to-date budget report as it currently is. And then if anyone has any questions on the fund activity statement or the year-to-date budget report through 727, I'll field those at the end. So to get to the bottom line, the current estimate right now is a projected surplus of $303,000. Now, having said that, there are, there are still some unencumbered items, which we just have not gotten invoices for. And, you know, there's, there's still some question on, on the cafeteria fund, dealing with that. There's a, I know there's at least one legal invoice we're waiting on, and some other minor things. Having said that, the open POs, which total 597, 597,000 are, for, relate to COVID supplies of 41,000, legal invoices of 42,000, utilities of 46, IT-related purchase orders of 32,000, curriculum 33,000, sped 47,000, pension, which I have now encumbered for 339, and then other small various items of 17,000. So that's the summary. So if anyone has any questions regarding either the fund activity statements or the year-to-date budget report.
Great, I'll just go around and ask, I don't know if George is on the call yet. Okay. Okay, great, do you have any questions for Ron on the fund statement?
No, no questions for Ron, thanks.
Okay, Jerry?
Nope, all set.
Shannon?
No questions.
Alan? Do we lose Alan somehow?
I think, I think we may have, Alan.
Okay, we'll get back to him if he pops back on. Dave?
Uh, thanks, Donna. Ron, we're going to be able to make that pension payment, right? You said it's encumbered? It is, yes. All right, thank you.
Nick?
Some of those surplus funds from the last fiscal year, is that still money that is available to us? Or can we, I know there's the 10, I don't-
10-248A, right?
Yeah.
So yes, that'll, that'll be a discussion we will need to have with the Board of Finance. And I, I think with the upcoming year, you know, Nick, a lot of the, the savings this year were, you know, a freeze went into place pre-COVID, and then COVID kind of created its own freeze. So a lot of the savings from this year, I, I think the general consensus is we're probably going to need next year, so.
Yeah, and I just want to, since we're here talking about the finances, I just want to kind of expand that a little bit. Because if you look at other districts in our region, I think Greenwich had a surplus of like 1.6 or something crazy. But the, the budget that we just finished on June 30th is kind of divorced from the budget year that we're currently in, July 1 to June 30th. And so just because we had a surplus at the end of the fiscal year that just ended, this isn't really a question, Ron, more a statement, that the surplus that we just ended with on June 30th doesn't mean that we're going to have all this extra money for July 1, 2020 to June 30th, 2021. So I just, my personal view, I just want to make it clear that my personal view is these are two separate things. I know that we still, as a board, have things that we have to cut because we have to come, we still have money that we have to cut to balance our budget in, for this year that we're in now. But there are going to be more expenses, COVID expenses, whether they're direct with PPE and materials and art supplies and special education materials and Chromebooks and stuff like that, or whether it's indirect costs, such as if faculty or staff don't feel comfortable returning and a sub needs to be put in place there, or any, any host of issues, things that we know now and things that we're not going to know until the first week of school and things we're not going to know until October. So I think it's just really important that, you know, the budget we just finished, although it ended in a surplus, and we were talking about multimillion-dollar deficits in January, that, that is separate from what we're dealing with now. And we are still cutting funds now to get to where we are supposed to be. So I myself had trouble wrapping my head around all those different things. And so I think it's just really important to go over the distinction between the two and the possibilities of several more hundreds of thousands or millions of dollars in expenses to come that we don't know about yet. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I would, I would agree with that. And I think, you know, if you recall, probably a couple months back now, I think Joe said the same thing during the budget process. We're trying to, you know, we were trying to prepare a budget at that time for a world that we couldn't have imagined.
Totally agree, thank you so much.
Donna, I think Alan's back on now.
Oh yes, I see him. And I think it is important that we do have a discussion with the Board of Finance because that would, we, if we put that in the 10-248A account, which we can put up to 2%, I mean, you, we could, if those PPE items come up, we could then draw from that account to, to cover them. You know, I would say 3, 3, I think you said 303 and change is probably not in the long run, depending on what we need to buy, going to go that far, but at least it does help. All right, Alan, any questions for Ron on the finance update?
Yeah, I lost my connection, so, you know, talk to someone after the meeting, get a summary.
Okay, no problem. Jeff, any questions?
No questions.
And Christine, any questions?
None.
All right, thank you, Ron, so much. All right, Joe, I guess you are now up for your presentation on the school reopening plan.
Thanks, Donna. Okay, let me just pull this back up again. Trying to close some things out so I don't keep coming back to them. Okay, you know, first, I just want to, I just want to begin by thanking the committee. We had a group of approximately 50 volunteers that sat on this, representing all of our, of our bargaining units, teachers, administrators, nurses, maintenance, secretaries, parent educators, librarians. We had other stakeholders, Board of Education members, and then some of the folks that offered some of the, some of the keenest insight was, was our parents. And they were, you know, tremendous mouthpieces for us as well. Like I said earlier, getting the word out that this committee was meeting, soliciting feedback from the community, whether it be on Facebook or other social media or through their own network. So I really want to thank them. There's a lot of work to do in all, in all this. Sorry. You know, before I even start, I've said it once, I will say it again. I'm going to say it probably two or three more times. This is going to change. Our, the, the, the framework that we have established is going to evolve, things are ever-changing. It's the only thing that's been constant since March 13th, is that nothing is constant. We're in a constant, you know, evolving situation, and we will continue to evolve with it. So on June 29th, the, the State of Connecticut sent out the Adapt, Advance, Achieve Connecticut's Plan to Learn and Grow Together. This really was the document that laid out the requirements that districts had to follow to reopen schools. And there were six guiding principles that the document was based on. The first and foremost, the one thing that we know, and probably the reason why, you know, there's, you know, well over 200 people on YouTube right now, and I think another 70-something, 80-something on Zoom right now, is, you know, we know that in order to do anything, you know, the psychologist Abraham Maslow had it right, you have to, you have to account for the health and safety needs of anyone. Before we can worry about educating students and, or anything else, we have to safeguard the health and safety of our students and staff. That was first and foremost. I will say, we have, in, in any plan across the state, we've, I've had these conversations with all the superintendents, we have risk mitigation strategies. We do not have risk elimination strategies. Like anything, there's, there's always some risk involved. And I just want to be as transparent as I can with everybody in, in saying that. Second guiding principle in the, in the document was that we prepare for all students to return to classes full-time starting in the fall. That was, that was clear from the get-go. With that being said, we are going to continue to monitor the school populations. We're going to continue to monitor the spread of COVID-19 to see when we have to move from one instructional scenario to another. I'll talk about that in a few minutes. But we're going to continually monitor the situation to see, you know, if we have to go from full in-person to some kind of a hybrid model, or to some completely remote learning situation. Again, we have to constantly monitor that. And we will be relying on our Department of Public Health officials as well for that, both at the local level and at the state level. The fourth one is, you know, making sure that we provided equity access and support to our students. We know that the, the distance learning, and I'll call it the emergency distance learning that took place in the, in the spring was difficult for some students, especially students- especially students that receive special, special needs, especially for our English language learners, and also especially for those students who were disengaged because of some kind of tech reasons, or even just for socially and emotionally, they became disengaged from the classroom. So, we have to really make sure that we connect with those folks right from the get-go. Another guiding principle is communication. That's going to be key moving forward. And it's not just us presenting this, it's us receiving feedback. We're going to have a period after this presentation for, for feedback and questions. We're not going to have the answers to all the questions right now. We'll be taking them down. We'll be responding to them, you know, over, you know, over the next coming days and weeks. And I'm sure we'll keep a continual list of that. But that, it's important that that communication comes two ways. And it's also important that people are paying really close attention. And I think people are to stuff coming out from either the district or the schools. And the last, the last piece was just finding that, that really difficult and addressing that balancing act between attending to the physical safety of our students and the social emotional wellbeing of our students. And we, like I said, we know that students, you know, struggled socially and emotionally over the, over, you know, really, even after school got out, all the way up to the present. So whatever, whatever we do this year, we need to address that, and we're going to address that right in the beginning of the year. Again, this, these instructional scenarios is in complete response to what we were directed to do by the, by the state. There's four scenarios here. There's really three that are pertinent to what we're doing. And it's really these three. These instructional scenarios are all predicated initially right now, and again, this has changed a little bit in the last 24 hours with the governor's comments. But it's all predicated on the amount of spread. And I want to be very transparent right now. I don't know what this means. I don't know what minimal spread means. I don't know what moderate spread means. I don't know what high spread means, because the state has said that they would tell us what, what it is, and they haven't told us that yet. I don't know if this means 10 per 100,000. I don't know if it means 1%, 5% or one person. So, we do, we do not, again, full transparency, we don't know what these things mean just yet. But this, again, these are the four scenarios, the three that we're going to look at. The first scenario is really what we've lived for the last, you know, you know, my whole career. And that is that, you know, there was no, there's no pandemic. Everybody's in school and there's no, you know, there are no restrictions. But we know that's not the case going into the, into the fall. We, we have been initially tasked with doing, and again, this has kind of changed in the last 24 hours, but it had, the message had been very clear up until yesterday that we were to prepare for, because the health indicators in Connecticut were pretty positive, that we should prepare for full in-person school with heightened health and safety protocols. Okay, and that's because we were in a minimal spread situation. If the health indicators were to, were to, were to change, we would, we could move to a moderate situation or the hybrid model. And I'll talk about that a little bit more, where roughly 50% of our kids are in school and 50% of our kids are at home, in either, during distance learning. In either of these two models, a parent could, can opt to have their children participate in temporary remote learning. So in either of these two models, our parents can, can automatically ask for their kids to, you know, learn from home. They would be, I'm sorry, this, that is a little bit different, just so you understand. There's also, there's temporary remote learning and there's homeschooling. And there's a difference between the two. Homeschooling means you withdraw your students from, from the Monroe Public Schools, whereas engaging in temporary remote learning means that they're going to still engage in the, in access the curriculum of the Monroe Public Schools. The one thing we are asking parents is that if you do want to have your child voluntarily participate in the temporary remote learning, that you commit to, you know, what's roughly one quarter of the year to start. Because it'd be really difficult to have folks moving in and out. We do know that people can come in and out, but we're asking people if they, if they choose that temporary remote learning, to please, you know, commit to at least one quarter, you know. It just, it makes it really difficult that people are constantly moving in and out. And then the, the final instructional scenario here is if we got, if we've gotten a really, if our indicators, health indicators go really south again, and we have to get into a situation where we are, where we are on full remote learning. Before I move on, again, what, I, I don't know what these definitions are. You know, one of the things that frustrates me is, you know, we've been told in the last 24 hours, there's some flexibility with how you start school. And, you know, I want to say, I want to make it very clear to everybody listening, this is a public health crisis. This is not an education crisis. You know, I am not, you know, the most well-equipped person to be making public health decisions. So none of those decisions will be made, you know, solely by myself or, you know, without, without input from our, you know, local Department of Public Health and the State Department of Public Health as we, as we, as we move forward, if we start to see, you know, higher spread situations. And again, the governor has eased some restrictions. So initially, the, the, the conversation was that everyone would start in full in-person. And now there's been some, a little bit of a change in, in tone to the fact that if a district is, if it's more appropriate for you to start in the hybrid model, maybe that's where you start. So as we look at our hybrid model here, this orange piece, I gave a sample schedule that would be applicable to all of our schools, K through, pre-K through 12. And what we would look at doing in this particular scenario under the hybrid model is that we would roughly have 50% of our kids learning at home, 50% of our kids learning, I'm sorry, learning in person. We would cohort the students, and what the re-entry committee decided upon, which they thought was the best, especially in terms of health and safety, was we would have a situation where Cohort A would be in school on Mondays and Tuesdays, while Cohort B participated in remote learning. And then we would have a, all students on remote learning gives us a, a chance to do an even deeper clean. Our custodians are going to be doing a tremendous job come the fall, and they're, they're getting prepared for all the new protocols. But this gives them an opportunity to do a good deep clean on Wednesdays. And then on Thursdays and Fridays, it changes where Cohort A now participates in remote learning and Cohort B participates in in-person learning. Just two other quick pieces on this. You know, the, the rationale for this, because we looked at a number of different scenarios. We looked at, you know, Cohort A in-person, Cohort B in-person, having them alternate. For health and safety reasons, we thought it would be good not to co-mingle without a cleaning day. So that's, that's how we arrived at two days of in-person learning, cleaning day, two days of, two days of in-person learning, cleaning day with the, with the weekend. The other piece is these cohorts will be broken up by alphabetically throughout the district. So if you're a family, if you have an older child and a younger child, you're not trying to come up with diff, a million different calendars for what days, what students are in school and what days are out of school. So it'll be broken up. We haven't, Power School gets released, rolled over tonight. So when that gets done, we'll figure out where the midpoint is in the alphabet, and we'll be able to, we'll be able to make those changes. Go on to the next slide. We're going to turn it over to, to some other folks here that are going to, that are going to speak to it. And I should have mentioned that in the, on the first, in the first slide. But really, the, the framework that we use from Ed-Advance focused on, it's really five areas. We're, we have health and safety. You're going to see, that's going to be broken up into health and safety. Darlene's going to talk about health, and Jack Chiklini's going to talk about safety. But the, the framework looked at, we had different indicators underneath, health and safety, operations and logistics, teaching and learning, and then communication. So I'm going to turn it over now to Darlene, who's going to, you know, start a little bit about the health and safety piece. And Darlene, just let me know when you need me to switch.
Okay. So as Mr. Codza mentioned, the health and safety of our community is of, is of the utmost importance and runs through every indicator in the reopening document. We have all heard or seen the health and safety mitigation strategies in commercials, on social media now, and on, actually on certain products. These strategies include maximizing social distancing. And as Mr. Codza said before, the original guidelines stated for six feet, but that has been relaxed a little bit, as well as other things. And we are going to, the district is going to, to the greatest extents possible, maximize our space and to reduce the risk. Frequent hand washing and sanitizing will be emphasized at all levels. The use of face coverings that completely cover the nose and mouth was a concern before we started our extended school year program. We have a little bit of experience with this because we did run our extended school year program. And before it began, we were, we were concerned about that, but we were all surprised at how well the students did. Of course, we had to work with a few students in the first few days, but to date, everyone has been able, right from our preschoolers to, you know, our 12th graders, everyone has been able to keep their masks on for the entire time that they are in the building. The next one is the clop and sneeze etiquette. That's always been taught in schools and it is for, you know, from preschool, and we will continue to emphasize that. There are enhanced cleanings and disinfectant strategies, which Jack Chiklini will talk about as part of the Safety Committee. Monroe will cohort students when feasible, and Lisa Peterson will speak to this part as part of the Logistics Committee. And then finally, encouraging students and staff to stay home when they're sick or symptomatic, which I will elaborate on in my next slides. So as part of the Health Committee, I'm going to touch on the requirements in this area. Thank you. The first, the first is that the districts must have a medical official. Dr. Dian is Monroe's medical advisor, and we have a nurse in each school, so we are in complete compliance in this area. Again, as part of our extended day, our extended year program, we submitted a health and safety plan, which was approved by the Monroe Health Department. In addition, our school nurse supervisor continues to work this summer to update health and safety protocols for the district. This plan includes strategies to stop the spread, an awareness of signs and symptoms of COVID-19, data collection for both attendance or lack of attendance, and documentation of possible cases, instructions for dismissal, including when it is safe to return to school, the location and use of isolation rooms, and contact tracing, which includes possibly shutting down a cohort for two to five days to determine if quarantine is necessary. Excellent, thank you. During the summer program, parents and staff completed the screening form, which was reviewed by the nurse each day as she took temperatures. Again, these, these guidelines have been relaxed a little bit. Our screenings included yes or no questions, such as, does a student or staff member have a fever, cough, chills, shortness of breath, or loss of taste or smell? During the school year, parents and staff will be asked to self-assess and need to understand that staying home if any symptoms are present, including a temperature of over 100 degrees, is necessary to stop the spread. We also understand that it may have been difficult for families to make doctor's appointments during this time. However, the state is strongly recommending that students be up to date on their immunizations so that they are not further compromised. Impairant, student, and staff trainings are being planned and developed to ensure that everyone understands the prevention and cleaning strategies outlined in the CDC guidelines. Next slide, Joe. Another important piece of our response to symptoms or confirmed cases, I'm sorry, another piece, another important piece of our, is our response to symptoms or confirmed cases of COVID-19. This flow chart helps to illustrate the steps the district will take. The school nurse will notify the principal and the nurse supervisor, and the use of the isolation room will be enforced. The, the isolation rooms will be, are now being looked at in each building where the isolation room will be located, and then who is going to supervise in the isolation room. So, the school nurse will notify the principal and the nurse supervisor of a suspected case. The student or staff member will utilize the isolation room until he or she can be dismissed. The nurse supervisor will then notify Dr. Dian, the Town Health Department, and the Regional Department of Public Health. The school will be immediately disinfected and parents will be notified. As I said before, there is a two to five day period to assess the situation. Students from that cohort may be put on remote learning, or schools may close during that period. Individuals who are positive may not return to school for at least 10 days after a positive result, and at least three days of being symptom-free. I'll now turn it over to Jack Chiklini for the Safety Committee.
Jack, are you on mute? I hope we dropped Jack.
Am I, am I on now?
You're on now, yep.
Sorry about that.
Now you got to repeat all that you just said.
Yep. Well, I'll be quick. So, thanks Darlene, thanks Joe. As the Subcommittee Charged with Addressing the Safety of Students and Staff, we focused on mitigation strategies. The most current information is that mitigation strategies will reduce risk. We know that no one strategy will stop COVID-19, but by instituting many strategies, we will help reduce the risk of the virus spreading. One strategy we are all familiar with by now is social distancing. We've posted social distancing reminders, and administrators have determined best traffic patterns within each school to promote social distancing. Joe, if you could go to the next slide. In, in terms of daily school routines, our routines will provide for more frequent hand washing and availability of hand sanitizer in classrooms and throughout the school buildings. Sanitation protocols and enhanced cleaning expectations have been addressed with custodians for during and after-school hours. If you go to the next slide, please, Joe. And finally, we know, also know that PPE is an important mitigation strategy. As a district, we've purchased 50,000 face masks, although staff and students are encouraged and asked to bring their own face coverings daily. We've also purchased reusable face shields, 600 alcohol wipe dispensers, and 1,000 gallons of hand sanitizer. We determined the volume of our purchases based on recommendations provided by our Regional Educational Service Center. Our current PPE supply is approximated to be a three-month supply at a cost of just over $80,000. We know that we are going to have expenses beyond the $80,000 mark, and I'll refer back to what Nick had said. There are costs that are still unknown due to COVID as we move forward. But these are the, these are some of the costs that we've incurred to this point. At this time, it's my pleasure to introduce Laura Marr, who will speak about student and staff social and emotional wellbeing.
Thank you, Jack. And yes, I was part of that committee about the social emotional wellbeing, which is of course of high importance. The social emotional wellbeing of our students, families, and staff must be assessed and evaluated. So we are going to start with a brief survey to our families and ask how students and families are coping, what resources they have, and what they may need. We will also survey our teachers and staff to determine what concerns they have, in what areas, and what we can do per school and as a district to support them. We will also connect with families and staff members that need more support or need to access more intense assistance in areas of social and emotional health. We expect there to be a heightened level of anxiety and uncertainty as we begin to open schools. And we have our administrators, counselors, social workers, and psychologists available to both families and staff. As the first months start, we will connect with families in a variety of ways. However, the main component is to be able to be honest about our feelings in order to provide that support. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Lisa Peterson, who will talk about logistics.
Hi, everybody. Logistics includes a number of areas that, when considered together, give us a practical overview of what a day will look like. And these areas include transportation, student groupings, daily schedules and room use, meals, and shared materials. This slide includes district-wide considerations that guided more specific building-level decisions. And on the next slide, I'll speak in more detail about what the day will look like at each of the grade levels, elementary, middle. what the day will look like at each of the grade levels, elementary, middle, and high school. At all of our buildings, we, Joe, can you go back? We're going to be looking at extended time for arrival and dismissal, and that goes back to what Joe said from the survey results with larger numbers of people bringing, driving their students to and from school each day. Weather permitting, we will look to maximize outdoor space as much as possible. As Jeff mentioned, building principals have visited classrooms and removed unneeded classroom furniture. Classroom setups have also been reconfigured, classroom desks are in rows facing the same direction, and where there are tables, plastic dividers will be installed. The picture you see is actually the massive cafeteria. The lunch tables have been relocated and extra student desks have been placed six feet apart, all facing the same direction to allow for a safe cafeteria lunch experience. Our hallways will be one-way traffic, the same will hold for library bookshelves. And our policy for returned library materials is the same as Edith Wheeler's library. We will hold materials for four days before being returned to the shelves. Physical education classes will be outside whenever possible and activities redesigned to maintain distance. And as much as possible, we are going to limit or eliminate shared materials. Joe, if you could go to the next slide. More specifically, at the elementary school, students will be escorted to classrooms by their teachers and dismissal will be by classroom, not cafeteria, on an individual basis for students who are being picked up so that we can maintain the security protocols that have been in place for a couple of years. At the middle school, students will report to homeroom upon arrival and dismissal will be staggered by grade level and by homeroom. And at the high school, students will report to their first period classroom upon arrival and dismissal will be by grade level or by classroom as well. Students at the elementary school will remain in their cohort by class all day. At the middle school, they will be cohorted by team. And at the high school, a dedicated cohort is not possible, but students will be assigned to a specific classroom all periods of the day. There will be no unscheduled access to common areas, and that is in order to maintain accurate attendance should be needed for contact tracing information. In the elementary school, students will remain in their cohort all day. Any rooms that are shared like art or the gym, we have allowed for additional time in between cohorts to clean and disinfect the rooms. Recession will also be by cohort and students will obviously wash their hands before they return to the classroom. At the middle school, class times will be adjusted to allow for extra passing time in order for students to properly hand wash and to wipe down desks. Kids' time at the Jackie Hallam main campus has been eliminated. Again, it's a need to account for student locations throughout the day should be needed for contact tracing. And unified arts will be designed by team cohort to the greatest extent possible. At the high school, we're looking to move to a block schedule, which will involve four classes a day instead of eight for a longer period of time. This reduces the number of passing times and overall students in the hallway and also reduces the overall number of students in a classroom on a daily basis. We have reduced class sizes where possible and we are going to move larger classes that cannot be reduced to larger spaces. At the elementary school, lunch will be delivered to classrooms and students will eat in their classrooms. They will have a choice in the morning and lunch will be delivered to them. At the secondary level, they will use the cafeteria in a limited capacity as well as other large spaces. To reduce or eliminate shared materials, this year each student will be assigned an individual Chromebook. In the elementary school, those will be kept in classrooms under the full open model. If we move to hybrid or distance, we will send a school messenger home with parents that we, we sent the Chromebook home with your student that day. In a hybrid model, that would mean that we would ask students to bring it back and forth to school every day. And we are also looking to provide individual materials for classroom activities, art supplies. And where that's not possible, we're going to disinfect and clean those materials between student use. At the secondary level, if students do not have their own Chromebook or Chrome-compatible computer, we are going to sign out a Chromebook to students for use at school and at home. That means that all students in grades six through 12 will be required to have a Chrome-compatible computer in class every day. And in classes where shared materials are inevitable, such as tech classes with desktop computers, we are looking to provide individual keyboards, individual supply kits for art classes, and individual use headphones for languages and for other classes because we are anticipating an even greater use of digital materials this year. And with that said, Sheila Castanelli will speak more to about curricular considerations.
Thank you, Lisa. So with teaching and learning, we really want to prioritize consistency of instruction regardless of the setting. Whether we're in full with everybody in school, we're in that hybrid model, or we're in distance learning. We want to try and maintain a structure of a school day as much as is possible. Really want to focus on that synchronous learning. As we talked about when we went out on that emergency distance learning back in March, synchronous learning is when teachers and students are working together and interacting in a digital space in real time. It's like live, if you want to use that kind of acronym. Where asynchronous is where the teachers are posting things and the materials are all there for students and they'll engage with and work at it at their own pace and their own timeframe. But we really want to make sure that there's that synchronous learning activity times, no matter what kind of a structure we're in. Curriculum revision, we're going to be taking a look at priority standards across all content areas and making decisions about what we will do to make adjustments to our curriculum. One that the high school has already looked at is science labs. In order to help with more social distancing in science labs, they, the high school is limiting lab time from their day. Students, because of the block scheduling, will be able to do some of those science experiments in their science classroom now that that classroom has less students in it to allow for social distancing. So the, the content will still happen, students will still get the materials that they need. And for those graduating and needing certain labs prior to going off to college, they'll have enough time with their other courses to meet that credit requirement for colleges. Professional development is going to be huge. For teachers, we are, first thing we have to do for all staff, not just teachers, for all staff is the health and well-being and taking a look at cleaning and safety trainings for everybody coming back to school. So that's an immediate thing. Then we have to look at our curriculum and make adjustments for blended learning. That idea of half my class is in person and half my class is online. What does that mean for teachers and how can they plan for that? We also have to talk about assessments and how are we going to monitor our students with, between, looking at what students had done from the fall to the winter, we have that information. We don't have a strong feel for where students were from March till June. Every year, you know, we have summer slide. Right now, we are talking and I'm sure you've heard COVID slide and wondering where students are. Every year in the fall, teachers come in and they figure out where students are and they get them back on track from whatever summer slide happened. With this COVID incident, we are going to be doing the exact same thing. But we will be working with teachers to try and make sure that some of the assessments and things that we're doing are really ready to help engage students as well. So we're not going to have them walk in the door and immediately start assessing them. What we want to do is that first unit of instruction is to build the community back in the classroom. Engage the learners, help with that social emotional learning that Laura Marr talked about with students who have concerns. Many of our families have, you know, first responders in them. Many families in our town had people who contracted COVID and dealt with those health issues. So we want to be conscious of that. We want to make sure that as we would typically do in September is you build that classroom community, no matter what the scenario is of what kind of setting we have. That's what we're going to be doing in that first unit of instruction. We're going to build that first unit so that it's engaging, helps students connect with each other, and also allows them some sense of achievement so that they can feel very positive about what they are doing. Those fall screenings, as I mentioned, are not going to happen immediately. They'll be informal screenings that teachers will be doing. And then we'll be taking a look and making decisions about where we need to go and meeting those students, engaging where they are and what we need to do to help support them. Those high priority students, as Joe mentioned, include not only our special education students and our English language learners, but also the students who weren't engaged during the distance, emergency distance learning that we had from March until June. We want to really spend extra time with these students to make sure that they are being met, their needs are being met, and we are able to support them and have them, you know, access the academic content as well as getting the supports for the social emotional learning. Last thing on my slide is about protocols for PE, CTE, art, music, our unified arts, our specials, depending on the level, called many things. First and foremost, we have to follow the CDC guidelines regarding social distancing, requiring materials, shared materials and things like that. For PE, as Lisa mentioned, wherever possible, PE classes will be held outside with social distancing to allow students to work on activities or fitness exercise and sports where the teacher is leading, but it's being performed individually and the focus is really on like lifetime fitness and wellness. Any materials that are used in PE classes will be sanitized. So as Lisa also mentioned, the schedules be adjusted to allow time for these to be cleaned. Art classes will be held in the art classrooms. Students will be asked to bring certain materials to class with them every day that'll be stored in their classrooms, in their cohort. Things that are needed specific for the art room, the art teachers will sanitize between classes. The good thing about the elementary schedule is that they only typically have one grade level per day so they can take those materials and just put them aside and clean them at the end of the day. Music, music will be happening depending on the size of the class in their music rooms, but large ensemble type things will be held in the cafeteria or the auditorium. Larger spaces that'll allow for the recommended 12 feet distancing when students are singing or performing wind instruments. And CTE will allow extra time for those shared materials to be cleaned and sanitized. There's a lot that we need to take a look at with teaching and learning. And a lot of it comes back to those CDC guidelines and making sure that we're following those for the health and well-being of our students. And with that, I pass it back to Joe.
Thanks, Sheila. You know, when we talk about communications, obviously I said it, I said it earlier, communication is going to be absolutely vital as we continue to move forward. I've been sending weekly updates. That will continue, it's going to continue from myself, it's going to continue from the, each school as well. I shared the district survey before, but there will be additional surveys that are going to be coming out that are much more specific to both students and, and staff so we can gauge where everybody is specifically. And like I said earlier, you know, kind of, you know, drilled down to a much more granular level so we can properly plan. And that, I anticipate that coming out in the next day or two. We do want to have opportunities for faculty, obviously, and rightfully so. Some of our faculty are concerned about, about the return and want to be able to address any concerns that they have with them. So we want to do a Zoom with them. We do have a landing page that we've, that we've created that's going to be on all the school websites as well as the district website that has all the information, including the reopening plan and all the communications that have gone out. We will put tips for parents on there, which will also probably go out as communications as well as school messengers. We want to, we'll be soliciting frequently asked questions, coming up with documents to share with families that address those questions and possibly also doing a panel presentation to address some of the, some of those, you know, key questions that people are repeatedly asking. Finally, we, we've set up a, an email account. It's called health@monroeps.org and this is the email account that people should specifically use to send any kind of, any kind of correspondence related to COVID to the, to the district and it'll get in the right hands. The last piece that I just want to share is, you know, again, I said it earlier, you know, this is a, this is a public health crisis and you know, there's a lot of things that we're going to be doing that, you know, normally would be, you know, major things that, you know, whether they were policy or major revisions or things that we're going to have to do in a quick turnover time. So, for example, tonight, we will be looking at the district calendar. We'll talk about that in a few minutes, which also includes some early release days at the beginning of the year. You know, we have to look at, we talked about, you know, throughout the presentation, we talked about staggered start and end times. You know, we have to find safe ways for kids to get into the buildings and for us to be properly staffed to be able to accept those, those students. And that's particularly important at the high school where you have, you know, a lot of times, you know, traditionally what happens at the high school and, and the middle school to some extent is the kids get off the bus and you know, at the high school, they go to the cafe, hang out, they go in the hallway, they sit with their friends and, you know, unfortunately, they're not going to be able to do that. They're going to have to go directly to their first period class and we'll have to, you know, stagger the, the times a little bit. Same thing at the end of the day to help, you know, facilitate getting the kids out of the building. You know, as you've seen, you know, we, there was some conversation throughout the year before, you know, you know, everything broke loose with, with the pandemic, that the high school wanted to move to a block schedule. You know, we are implementing a block. It's not necessarily the block that I think was initially proposed. But this is something, you know, as we've talked about to, you know, try to, at, at the high school where it's much more difficult to cohort students, a box schedule at least provides us fewer opportunities or provides the students with fewer opportunities to intermingle. So they would only be changing classes, you know, four times a day instead of eight. That reduces the hallway traffic. We've also talked about instituting, again, only as an emergency response to this public, public health crisis, an open campus where at the high school, if a student didn't, didn't have class and his parent could pick them up and take them home because it's, you're looking at about 75 minutes or so. Or if they, if they drive, you know, with parent permission, you know, being able to leave and come back to campus. You know, that's completely to promote the health and safety and to reduce social, or increase social distancing as much as possible. Not something we would want to, want to maintain once this public health crisis is over. We have technology implications where, you know, we're going to be asking parents to sign off on agreements that say if they damage technology that they, they would be responsible for it. We were fortunate in the spring, the majority of our, the large majority, almost nearly all of our, of our technology came back in good shape. We were happy about that. We've got to, we've got to determine attendance policies for those students to participate in the temporary remote learning or when we go, if or when we go to the hybrid or the remote learning phases. You know, how we take attendance and, you know, what's going to count for attendance has to be different than the, than the spring. Sheila talked about the elimination of the lab periods in the science courses. You know, that allows us a couple of things, Sheila touched on it. But it allows us to create, I believe it was, there was 10 teachers that teach lab courses. And by eliminating those lab courses, that will allow them to teach an additional course. Basically, that then thins out the other science classes and really classes all around the building. So by, we're basically adding 10 sections of classes at the high school to reduce class sizes throughout. And one of the other things is, I know Jack was working on a pandemic and epidemic policy. So that concludes our piece for now. I would be happy to solicit, you know, any questions from the board and I, I'm going to say right now, and I know we have public participation after this, and I know we have a slate of folks who are interested to, to participate and we, you know, absolutely appreciate that feedback. I can guarantee you, I've said it repeatedly, the easiest game to play in Monroe is stump the chump. If you ask any superintendent and we talk constantly, we don't have all the answers yet and we're going to, we're going to keep, you know, finding those answers. So, you know, especially the, the public participation point, we'll be receiving mostly feedback at, at that point. And, you know, we will address those questions over the coming days.
Great, thank you, Joe. I will go around to the board if they have questions for Joe or anybody on the team that they want to ask specific questions to.
Thanks, Donna. And I asked- Thanks Donna, and I asked the, the whole administrative team, you know, that's on tonight to, to, you know, to be on the Zoom. So, you know, if I have to kick a question to them or if they have, you know, if it's an area of expertise, we, we broke this up into a bunch of different groups. So any of them should feel confident to jump right in as well.
All right, great, thank you. George, do you have anything?
Yeah, so this, Joe, probably is for yourself and for Lisa. We, you showed the matrix of the cohort breakout for elementary by class, for middle school and high school by team. What is that, how does that align with looking at alphabetical order and determining which kids would be onsite and which kids would be distance learning? And, you know, the, I, I think you stated the, the desire to not have parents have mixed schedules with siblings. So how does that, how does that, how do those two things connect together?
Yeah, roughly, George, what we're looking to do is have the students that are, if, right now, if you just look at alphabetically, probably be something along the lines of A through M would be cohort A. So any students who are in that particular cohort, cohort on those distance learning days, they would be in, in class on Mondays and Tuesdays. And, you know, L through Z would be, no, I'm sorry, N through Z, N through Z or whatever it is, wherever it breaks down, would be cohort B. And we would do that district wide to prevent, you know, to prevent, like I said before, like you said, you know, parents having to deal with different kids. It also could be very helpful if you have older siblings who could also help out. We know that this is going to be, you know, we know it was in the spring. It's a, it's a, it's tough for parents who are working and, you know, this gives them some stability in knowing which days. And then, like I said, if, if you have older siblings, they can help out as well.
Okay. And so at an elementary school level, we would look at the, you know, the midpoint in the alphabet to determine those cohorts. So does that then break up an individual class? So an individual third grade classroom, the A through M would be on Monday, Monday, Tuesday, and N through Z would be on Tuesday, Thursday. Is that how you see it working?
Exactly.
Okay. Okay. And then at the team level, when you start, it's, it, elementary seems a little bit more elementary when you're trying to think about that, but in terms of the middle school and the high school, that's where the kids begin to start doing like, they, they have different teams that they're on. And that's sometimes based on what classes they're in and if there's honors classes involved or world language classes involved or, you know, especially when you get to the high school and you get the, the complete diversity of the classes. How do you see that working? Would it be the same?
Exactly the same, George. Yep. So on any given day, the students who are in class, the students are home, should be accessing the same curriculum. It may be a little bit different how they access it, but exactly the same that the kids, A through M are there on those two days, N through Z, you know, on, on Thursday, Friday.
Okay. Okay, that makes sense. Okay, next question and last question. And I, I completely appreciate and agree that we don't have all the answers yet. And to your point, Joe, this is going to shift probably several times over the next couple of months here. So, but for yourself and maybe Sheila, this comes from, I guess, personal, personal experience. My wife is a teacher in Trumbull. Trumbull's proposing something very similar to this. So she has concerns around being a teacher. What, what's the teacher experience going to look like? Okay, so if you're, if you're, if you're teaching half your class on Monday in the classroom and half of the class distance learning, how does that, what are the logistics of that? Like, is there going to be a, you know, are you going to record the class and give it to the, the distance learning students later? Are you going to have live streaming? What are some thoughts around how that kind of thing is going to work?
Sheila, do you want to add something to that first?
I was going to say, is it all right if I jump in? Okay. We still need to work out the logistics on this, but, you know, here's a possible scenario that I have heard in other places that I like. If basically teachers plan as if they're virtual, so they'd set up everything in a Google classroom, like their, their first unit that they're going to be teaching the month of September, they set it all up in the Google classroom, which many of our teachers had previously been using and were familiar with, but they didn't necessarily put everything in there. But now the, the thought would be, you set it up as if I'm going to teach this entire first unit and everything from Monday through Friday for the next three weeks is all set up in my Google classroom. On the days that I have half my class, I'm going to continue to do those types of lessons if I'm working on English language arts and I'm working on character study and character traits. So I've set that up and there's short stories that students are going to read and the passages are in the Google classroom, or they've got books that they're reading themselves because they're in book clubs. When the students are at home doing the distance learning, they're going to follow what the Google classroom asks them to do. The students who are in the classroom, the teacher will be doing the same activity, being characterization, but they won't necessarily be having the students do all of the writing. They may be sharing some other short stories, they may be doing more, and I'm not sure how this is going to work, but the idea of turn and talk and sharing things between students with social distancing and the partitions that we're going to have and that types of things. The more interactive, but the content would be the same. So what the students are getting home is the same as the content that the students are getting in the classroom.
Okay. Okay, so it sounds like the remote students are getting more of an offline experience. They're not going to get like a what live webcast with the, with the teacher? Or do you, in some scenarios where that happens?
I think there could be some scenarios where that would happen and I would hope that there would be. So there, and maybe some of those, like I said, when I, I shared my slide, George, I talked about the synchronous learning. We want to kind of have a typical school day because we want students to get back into that feel of a school day and we want teachers to have it as well. That synchronous piece has to happen, but for the students who are home, it's not going to be the whole day. It's not going to be the teacher being live the whole day, but they may want to share out how to do a Venn diagram about characters, comparing two characters between two stories. So the teacher is going to go and have a set time for the students who are home and have it live. So the students who are in our classroom are seeing the same things as the students at home, or it could be a social type of thing. They're going to do a read aloud and that read aloud will carry, carry through, she'll do that, he, she will do that, you know, the four days a week, so that the entire class is getting the read aloud. Some of the kids are at home listening to it and some of them are in school listening to it. So it's going to be a little bit of a mix, but I don't envision it as the teacher being, trying to be live with her students in the classroom as well as being alive with her students at home 100% of the time.
I got you. Okay. So thank you, that's very helpful. That, my question turned into not just a teacher experience, but a student experience. So thank you for that, very helpful. I'm, I'm good Donna.
Thank you, George. Joe, can I just ask a quick question? With the hybrid model of the Monday, Tuesday, off Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, now that's something that originated, I believe, with the state. So they, I think one of the things they asked for was for, for districts to, we didn't just come up with that, they asked for districts to look at that so that there would be some sort of consistency throughout the state with regard to the hybrid, is that correct?
Yeah, you're 100% correct, Donna. After I passed that screen, I'm like, oh, I forgot to say that. So thank you for picking up on that. Yeah, the, we, we've met as a region and it's pretty much, I haven't heard of a district that hasn't done that. And a lot of that's also, you know, just to provide consistency, at least through the region. I know the Western Connecticut superintendents, I'm pretty sure the Fairfield County superintendents have both agreed on this model. I talked to a superintendent in stores today, they're doing the same model, so I imagine this is what you're going to see around, around the state. Think it helps, you know, it gives people at least some consistency around the state. Some of them may look a little, it'll be Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, that's for sure. Some may do the cohort A, cohort B, Monday and Tuesday, and same thing on, on Thursday and Friday, as opposed to ours where we do cohort A, cohort A. But our group was really adamant that if our guiding, if the number one guiding principle is health and safety, that's the healthiest and safest way to, to do this. But you're absolutely right Donna, thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Jerry, questions? You're next.
A comment and, and a few of questions, Jeff. First of all, everybody, thank you. I, I know this is very, very fluid. Please, all of you understand, we are looking at this very, very seriously. I know for myself, you know, as a father, a grandfather, a retired teacher here in Monroe, we are looking at every single angle we can and no question is an ignorant question. With that said, Sheila, I, I would like to jump on one with my phone exploding as you see me looking down at it. If I could get to C T E a moment, of course, as being the past president of that, that is important. I, I realize it's a very fluid process and at the middle school and the high school, it's very involved, but if you could just get into a little bit more about what your vision might be for C T E, I'd appreciate a little bit of help there to stop my phone from humming.
Sure, I can try. You know, the thought is we're trying to reduce class sizes too. So if you think about it, it's going to be, as Joe said, we're trying for about 50%, you know, that give or take, and it's depending on how that alphabet falls, which is why we really need the power school piece to figure out what that looks like. So C T E, similarly to art, and I'm, I'm thinking of some of our art classes are going to have to shift and that's why we need that PD time in the beginning of the year. And I neglected to mention that the state has granted us to do 177 days as opposed to the 180, allowing us for three more professional development days to really work with teachers to adjust curriculum. When I think of C T E and equipment, having less students in the classroom will allow for social distancing, which will really help. The shared materials are going to have to adjust schedules so that those shared materials, you know, the machines and things, Jerry, and those C T E rooms are going to have to be disinfected between classes. So I think we're going to need to use those PD days to figure out what are we going to teach and when, and look at the priority standards within each content area to say, if I do these, you know, two standards with this group on this period, period one, and then when period two comes in, I'm going to do this standard, so they're using different machines, you know, so adjusting what, how I'm utilizing even the physical space within my classroom. The same when I think about using our ceramics classes, you know, and that we do in our art rooms, starting all the way down in the elementary school compared to using the potter's wheel up in the high school. You know, we're going to have to rethink how some of those things are done. Doesn't mean we can't do it, we're just going to have to rethink how some of those things are done.
Yeah, very, very fluid. And I, listen.
Very fluid.
Get the answer and I know exactly, but, Joe, I don't know if this, Sheila, I don't know if this is for you or Joe. What are the plexiglass walls used for, Joe, that you brought up in your presentation? I know the answer, but I want you to answer it.
That's a good one. And Jack has been, Jack is doing a great job going around with Bill Gerasko as well, going around, you know, first of all, in the summer, you know, basically providing the sneeze guards that you've seen at, you know, most of your local, if you've been out and you've been to any, you know, restaurants or, or whatnot, you've seen the sneeze guards to offer protection. We've done that around all of our offices for, you know, for the secretaries and whatnot. But we're also doing it for, at the elementary level where, you know, we might have a large table with two kids sitting at, just to have another divider for, for the students.
Okay, and then just one last one. Why are we waiting, why aren't K through five students bringing the laptops home? What happens if we have to shut instantly? Sorry, I'm reading it off the screen.
Oh, that's great.
I mean, if we have to shut instantly, what are we going to do?
We talked about this a little bit. We were, and Lisa, I don't know if you wanted to address this because I think, you know, we talked about this as an administrative group last week. We know, I think we were comfortable with certain grades, having the equipment and, and, you know, taking it back and forth. I think we were afraid to give laptops, you know, having, you know, K1, 2 especially, bringing laptops back and forth, you know, and not having, you know, damaging it. So that was, that was a thought process behind there. We were able to distribute materials. If we have to go out quickly, you know, I, I think first of all, we're going to be assigning particular, even though they may not be taking it home, taking them home, we're going to be assigning specific devices to kids so they're not sharing those Chromebooks. And if we have to get to a situation where they need to go home, we could probably get them home that day, you know, and if not, we had a really pretty efficient way to get materials out to, out to people last time we went out. Lisa, did I hit everything?
Yeah, and this year we are going to have a sign out sheet, even if, even at the elementary schools, on the first day of school, we're going to have student names with serial numbers so students will have a dedicated machine. The thought was for the younger students to have to bring them back and forth every day with backpacks, especially like Joe said, kindergarten. So we're going to leave them in the classroom until we absolutely need it and in a truly worst case immediate scenario, we'll do a pickup like we did this spring and have, and have students come in and get, or have parents come in and pick up the computers. But hopefully we'll have at least enough notice that we can send it home with them at the end of the day.
Joe, one more and I'll shut off my phone. Having, having a daughter and a son, a son-in-law and a daughter-in-law all in education, when are we surveying the faculty, Joe, to find out what they want? You know, I'm looking at this as a retired Monroe teacher now, so I'm going to throw them a hat. I'm 33 years old. When, I know little surveys went out a month ago, when are we going to get finite to say, hey, how are you feeling? Are you coming back?
We sent it out today, Jer.
Okay, thank you.
Sent, we sent the, the initial, the initial one out today to staff, just to first gauge who is, who's not going to be back.
All right, I'll shut off the phone. Thanks guys.
Thanks Jer.
Thank you, Jerry. I have a follow-up with regard to elementary school on Chromebooks. Now what happens if a family has their own Chromebook? Are we discouraging those kids bringing it in? Would you rather just have the ones that are issued from the schools for, you know, for having, I mean, I know ours who are in the school have certain functionality that is shut off. Do we just want to keep it that way so that there is no issues with having things on the Chromebook that maybe shouldn't be on there, that you can't control because it's the child's own Chromebook?
Lisa, do you want to hit that one?
Sure. No one would not allow a Chrome, you know, a, a personal Chromebook to be used at the elementary levels. There are additional security protocols. Paul, if you're still in the meeting, if you want to hop in as well, internet searches are reduced, so there's definitely a security issue. The thought of, the survey results indicated that 612, we had a really high number of families that said they could bring a computer every day at the elementary schools. You know, they're not doing the research and, and those types of, of assignments, so fewer students had capability to do that. So we figured at the elementary school, we can just use the, the student Chromebooks, but if a student was really in love, especially in the, the upper elementary, just grades four or five, that would certainly be acceptable. Paul, do you want to add anything to that?
Yeah, if, if I could, when a student logs in to even their own personal device, when they log in with their MonroePS.net account, all of the account restrictions then carry over. So safe search, any, any applications that we pushed out by policy. So that follows the student login. So Donna, to answer your question, no, we certainly would not discourage any, any family at all from using their own device.
Great, thank you so much Paul and Lisa. I just wanted in case people, parents out there have that and that's a question for them. We'll move on. Shannon, you're up next.
I don't have any questions right now that I can think of. I'm sure I'm going to have questions at some point, but I don't have any right now that we haven't been talking about and I know a lot of things we don't have the answers to yet. I, I wanted to say welcome back to John Batista too. We were having technical difficulties at that time, but it's good to see your face again and welcome back. And last time you were here, we had a lot of blizzards and now we're having a pandemic. So, coincidence. So, yeah, there's, I'm appreciative of all the work that's being done by everybody and the communication, like it is ever-changing, so the communication all, all the ways around with the, with the parents, with the teachers, all the way around, it's going to be with the, with the parents, with the teachers, all the way around, it's gonna be really important moving forward.
Great, thanks, Shannon. Nick?
Yes, I just have a couple comments. First thing I wanna say is, it's a really good thing, and thank God the governor changed his mind on this, because frankly, every day that went by that he didn't change his mind, I was getting more and more upset. I think back in May and June, which was only six or eight weeks ago, but feels like a lifetime ago, it was a good goal, I think, to have full school reopening in the fall. I think it was a good goal at the time, because I remember when this all started in March, we were all like, oh, two weeks, we're gonna be back. Okay, maybe six weeks, we're gonna be back. Okay, maybe 10 weeks, we're gonna be back, and here we are. So I think giving local boards of education more control over hybrid learning or remote learning based on what's going on in that community is really helpful, because the governor's original plan was reckless. Forcing districts to open fully without their input was not a good idea, and I'm very happy to see that local control is being given more. I think one thing that we treasure in this state, and frankly, in most parts of our country, is that education is controlled by local officials who are closest to the community, and it's really important, it's most important in times of crisis such as these, so that's my first comment. You know, I just was reading my notes. For example, we can't open restaurants at 100%. We can't have more than 100 people gathering outside, but we were gonna be forced to put, you know, 900 kids at MASC. So I think it's, it's good that we're having that discussion, and as Joe said, things are constantly changing, and this is gonna change again. It might change tomorrow. I was gonna say it's gonna change next week. It might change tomorrow, we don't know. Second, I just wanna give a big shout-out to the administrators. I volunteered for the reopening committee, not realizing, I guess, what, what was gonna go into it. I learned a lot, and I learned a lot from the administrators. I served on the logistics committee with Lee and Lisa and Julia, and we had a lot of meetings. Things were, things ran really well. We had all of our, we tried to have all of our ducks in a row, but again, things kept changing every week. And on the reopening committee as a whole, I know the administrative team took a lead in all of our subcommittees. It was very structured, and so that really helped the framework and building the final plan. The final plan was 75 pages, so imagine typing that up and having to come up with that yourself. It came from all the different subcommittees, and our administrative team really did an amazing job. I did just like a quick back-of-the-envelope estimate the other day, just averaging how many, how much time everybody spent, and for one person to have done all the work that was done on the reopening committee, it was about nine to 10 months. So it was about nine to 10, like, work months compressed into about three weeks, which is kind of crazy to think about, but we got it done, because that's what we do. The third thing I want to just touch on briefly is talking about the complexity of the issue, and I have been reading on social media, and I've been hearing from, from friends of mine who are parents in the district and in other districts about, why can't we just do it? Why can't we just come up with a plan and do it? And so I was talking to a friend of mine the other day, well, don't tell her, don't tell her I said this, it was actually my mom. My mom lives seven minutes away, and I was talking to her, and she goes, Nick, why, why can't we just reopen schools? Why, why can't we do it? And so I was trying to think of an analogy of two, of how we reopen schools that I could kind, my, my mom's never been in education, she's never kind of dealt in this fear, and I was trying to think of a way to analogize to her what's going on. And so the first thing I thought of was, you know, imagine you're an actor in a play, and you're the lead actor in this play for 10 years, and you're doing the same thing for 10 years. And the analogy here is that when we're reopening our school buildings, in a normal year, there is a laundry list of things to do and things that have changed from the year before, a laundry list in a normal year, okay? So that's you being the actor. Now imagine your director comes in, the director is the governor here, the director comes in and he says, okay, I know you've been doing the same thing for 10 years, but in a couple months, you might have to play one of three roles, and I'm not gonna tell you which one until two weeks before. And by the way, you might have to switch between those roles on any given day, we're not really sure. Imagine what you would have to go through to prepare for something like that. And we talked about that, and then she was like, oh, that's, that's a lot, right? So this is a multi-variable, complex issue. I tried to come up with a baseball analogy, it didn't really work, I'm not a sports guy, but you can, you can kind of see where that would go. A pitcher and batting, I don't, I don't really know, but it's in there somewhere. So I think that everybody who's involved in this, the administrative team, the parent representatives that were on the reopening committee, to come to the final product that we came to, that the superintendent presented tonight, was an awesome process to go through. When I say awesome, I mean large, and that things are gonna constantly change, but I think what we have to realize as a board and as a district is that where we are today, we are at a great level to be at, because now as we go forward and things continue to change, we have a great foundation to work from. And so even if things change drastically in the next five weeks, we'll be ready to adapt to whatever comes down the pike, because we have all these different plans that are basically operational, that we can adjust at any given time. So basically, my comment, I don't really have any questions. I've been, I was at all the reopening committee meetings, I saw this plan take shape over the last couple of weeks, but really, a huge, huge shout-out to our employees and our staff. You know, Joe, I saw Joe struggle in one of the reopening committee meetings, and I felt that, struggling about the balance between the educational rigor and the education of our students, and balancing that with, and the social-emotional part, and balancing that with the health and safety of our students. And it's a real, it's a real struggle. I think we're all dealing, still dealing with it. How do we balance those two things in this global pandemic? And so I think our plan, somehow, our plan walks that line. And I think that even if nothing changes in the next five weeks, if we had to take one of the plans that we have presented tonight, we're gonna give our students an excellent educational experience. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Nick, and I appreciate it for you speaking about the whole reopening committee. We had talked about it often, and ask, please share his thoughts on that. We will move on. Jeff, anything?
Yes, a couple of questions. Joe, when we're talking about the hybrid model, you know, 50/50 cohort, going Monday, Tuesday, you had mentioned Wednesday being a cleaning day. Is that, I mean, are we gonna do anything differently for that Wednesday as far as clean buildings are concerned, or is this more like a scheduling, makes it easier to schedule?
It doesn't necessarily, it's not just a scheduling thing, it's, it's a little bit of both. It's, you know, to, you know, promote social distancing, it's to, you know, I, I don't, and I don't know if Bill Gerasko's on tonight, you know, I know, you know, there's this, this idea of deep cleaning, they deep clean all the time, it's about, it's about cleaning, disinfecting, and sanitizing, but it does allow for some airtime. We do know that, you know, one of the things we know is that, you know, the virus doesn't stay on some, on some materials for quite as long as it wants. So there is a, a health component to it, for sure. And then just a, it's a better way to, for us to socially distance kids as well, and staff.
And then, as far as the health's concerned, I mean, have we thought about enforcement mechanisms for kids who, you know, it's, I think it'll be inevitable where you'll see kids forget a mask, or, you know, if they're waiting for the bus, they forget a mask, or they're not gonna be allowed on the bus. Same thing, if they get dropped off at school and they forget a mask, are we gonna have or supply masks for kids?
It's a good, you know, the first one's a good question, Jeff. I don't know if, you know, anyone, feel free to jump in. I don't know if we've addressed if they don't have it for the bus. We will have masks. I know that was part of the, the $82,000 we've spent to get started this year. I think we bought like 50,000 masks to get ourselves started for, you know, for students or staff that, you know, don't, don't have one when they're at school. But the question about the bus is a good one, and I think your, your other one is a good question, too, about the enforcement mechanism. I know there's a lot of concern about masks, and, you know, I understand, you know, where people are coming from, but as of right now, you know, the guidelines we're getting from the state is that, you know, the masks are mandatory, so the expectation's gonna be that kids wear them, and if they don't, you know, it's, it's gonna be a problem.
And then, last question about how to do logistics with the elementary schools. Correct me if I'm wrong, but we, the plan is that the kids are gonna wait and go as a class? Is that correct?
I'm sorry, go to what, as a class?
Get off the bus, essentially wait, and then collectively, as a class, go to their classroom.
Lisa Kelly or Lee, do you guys wanna address the arrivals? I don't know if one of you guys-
Yeah, I, I think for the arrivals, Jeff, it, you know, typically, one or two buses may roll in at the same time, and to promote social distancing, we would unload one bus at a time, and those kids would go right to their classroom, but we would stagger instead of just unloading three buses at a time. But they, they wouldn't collectively wait for everybody else in their classroom, they would just trickle in. Yeah.
I must have been confused about that, so, thank you. And then, the, the last thing I think I have is about curriculum. Have we thought about doing any kind of survey for the students ahead of time, and, you know, getting a kind of feel for where they are emotionally and their thoughts on returning and all? I mean, I know we've sent stuff out to the parents, but-
Yeah, you're, you're absolutely right, Jeff. You know, we have an admin meeting tomorrow, we're gonna talk about this, because we, yeah, we have sent stuff out to staff, we have something ready to go out to parents, but, you know, that has been feedback that, that we've gotten, is that, it's important. I mean, th- those are our consumers, it's, it's the kids. So, yeah, I think we do need to reach out to them and find out, you know, where they are. I know we, part of the surveys that we gave in the spring, we did survey students to find out, you know, for a lot of the curriculum pieces, you know, what did they enjoy, what did they participate in, what did they, you know, what did they find most useful? So, you know, to follow up on that is important.
Thank you, that was it for me.
Thanks, Jeff.
Can I go back, Donna, and ask one?
Sure.
Okay. I just got this one in, and I think it's a good question. What kind of COVID tests will they have at the school? Will it be like a rapid test with the rapid result, or, or just, what is the plan for COVID tests at the school?
They, Darlene, probably Darlene, jump in if you want, but I, there will not be COVID tests at the school per se. If they are, if they are symptomatic, they'll go to an isolation room, and then they would go to the doctors, and then, you know, I, I think it would depend on the medical professional of what they would do, but we, they would not be able to come back until they were, we either had a COVID negative, or if it was COVID positive, based on the criteria that Darlene had indicated earlier. But we don't, we, we don't have the capacity, I mean, there's not even that many facilities in Connecticut. I've had, I've had a test done, I had to go to, you know, I had to go to Bridgeport, and that was the closest one to me. Is that, is that about it, Dar?
Yeah, you're right, Joe, we, we won't have the capacity to do any testing, but in the guidelines, in the protocols that we are writing for the nurses, it's when, when a child has symptoms, the nurse will notify the parents and the, and will ask the parents to make a doctor's appointment at that time, so that we can, you know, we can determine whether it, you know, if the student needs to go on for testing or not, and that would be a determination by the doctor.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Donna.
Christine?
Hi, yeah, thanks for all the hard work of the committee. I just had a couple of questions. One was, is there a target date of when you'll just, you know, when the district will decide if we're going to go, you know, full or hybrid?
Great question. Yeah, I think, I think, you know, we would have to shoot for probably the second week of August, it seems to be, you know, I know there was supposed to be some additional guidance being given by the state on August 11th, so I would say soon after that, August 13th, 14th, somewhere in that area.
Okay. And then, in terms of the, you know, where the survey asked how many parents would drive their kids to school, are you gonna ask, are you gonna hope, like, that's more like for the school year, long-term, or, you know, are you asking for a certain amount of time to parents to kind of give you that, you know, I'm gonna drive my son to school till December and revisit it then, or are you asking for like the whole school year to commit to it?
Not necessarily, and it's really, that was more just to give us an idea, to see what the buses-
Right.
I, I totally understand that. If someone said, yeah, I'm gonna drive him every day, and then, you know, they had to go to work and they-
Right.
-pick the bus, that's, that's-
Things can change.
It's absolutely, things are gonna change.
Okay.
That'll be fluid.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks, Christine. Alan?
Yeah, I was just wondering how pullout services would work with regards to like special education, reading support, group counseling, speech services, that sort of thing. Given that, you know, these kids are pulled from different, tend to be usually pulled from different classrooms and are intermingling together.
Well, speak to the reading intervention, please, you know, reading and math intervention at the elementary level. We're keeping students by cohort, so groups will be made based on cohort, and some groups may only have, you know, two students in it, and the next class, they may have four students in it. And where possible, the reading teacher will go to the classroom to work with them, or they will take them out to their room. Again, we have to work, figure out that with schedules and space in the room, now that we've put in the furniture in the way that we have to, you know, accommodate social distancing. But reading will definitely be kind of a combination of going into the classroom or pulling them out, but they will stay by cohort. Darlene, you wanna-
Yeah, the same would be true, Alan, for services, special education services, our, you know, our resource rooms and most of our, our program managers are by grade level or by teams, so we will be able to cohort them also. So it would, you know, it would mean that we would have to, you know, definitely by grade level, we would have to know who's coming in to a resource room, so that, you know, for contact tracing, that we would be able to do that. But again, the numbers would be minimized, because we, we would have, you know, a cohort A or a cohort B, hopefully reduce numbers in the building at a time.
Thank you.
All right, and I think I somehow skipped Dave, so Dave, you're next.
That's okay, I understand. Joe, hearing from our local medical advisor, the guidance from the state and all of that, what's your recommendation to us right now, if you even have one? Are you recommending to us that we go back into the full in-person school? As of right now, is that tentatively what you're thinking, or is it still a, we have no idea?
That's, I would say that's what I was thinking on Friday, when that was the charge by the, by the state, and right now, I have no idea, and quite frankly, you know, it part of the reason why I'm sleeping about two hours a night, because, you know, those are, those are public health issues, and that's, that's part of my frustration with this, and it's the frustration that I share with, you know, my superintendent colleagues right now that are, you know, not public health officials. So, you know, a lot of it's gonna depend on input from other people besides me, so, yeah, definitely too early for me to, to tell right now, that's for sure. I thought, I thought snow days were anxiety-ridden enough, but-
Yeah, no, those will come, too. I think we need to look at this local school board control, like Nick was talking about, and I think we may have to schedule a meeting in August, I hate to say it, because I, I think we should assist you in these, in these decisions. It's a very difficult decision, but we should base it on what's the best for Monroe, not, not what's best for Hartford. And if that means doing what we need to do, which is best for Monroe, going against the governor order, then I think we should have that conversation as well. Let's do what our local medical directors are telling us, because this is a health crisis, so I wanna throw that out there. I do like that proposed hybrid model, and I believe at some point, with flu season coming up, too, that we're gonna be at a full distance. So I think it's gonna be a, a back and a forth, and it's gonna be a tough, tough year. I do wanna, I actually wanted to start off by saying, thanks to you and all the staff. Nick brought up a good- Nick brought up a good point of the exorbitant amount of work that was put into this. It's very obvious. So, thank you everyone for that. Uh, Joe, do you, are we going to take advantage of the three days that the state is giving us? And then wh- when are we starting? Do we have a start date?
Yeah, we're, we're going to, uh, address that when we, uh, down in new business, we're going to talk about the calendar. But, um, since you asked, Dave, absolutely, we're going to take care, we're going to take advantage of the, uh, of the three days in the beginning of the year to add for some more professional development for our teachers. We want to ease folks in as much as we can. We want to give ourselves as much lead time, as much pre-work as we can get done to make this as seamless as possible. So, um, we will, teachers are supposed to start on the 24th of August. So, it's the 24th, 25th, 26th. Students were supposed to start on the 27th. Um, that will, that will now be a, uh, a, a professional development day. So, we'll have three more professional development days. So, students will not start, you know, proposed anyway, uh, until you guys, uh, adopt the, uh, calendar tonight. Um, they will start on September 1st, which is a Tuesday. And we are actually looking to make those ha- uh, early dismissal days for students to help acclimate them into the new procedures, you know, get us ready and help teachers and, you know, give us some time after this, you know, provided that we're in, provide teachers with the time to, um, you know, make changes, collaborate with each other and, and work together. So, we're looking at, um, September 1st day for the first day for students. And then we go four days and then we have the three-day weekend because Labor Day falls a little bit later this year.
All right, thank you. I didn't mean to jump ahead, but I, I did wanted to answer that. Um, uh, if we are going back full in-person or a hybrid, any conversation on sports? Uh, I know there's been some modifications to sports, but what, what's feasible, um, you know, to do, to not do, or, or to modify? Cause I, that's a big concern with a lot of people.
Absolutely. I, I don't know why, but, um, the CIAC called me and asked if I'd sit in on their committee as they're trying to deliberate some stuff, you know, in all my spare time. So, um, I did, uh, I have been sitting on that. It, you know, they're looking at, uh, you know, possibly still starting on time, but really, right now, there are, uh, there are protocols in place, uh, and CIAC, uh, has relaxed out of season conditioning. Um, so students are now, uh, working out with some of their coaches for the fall, um, in cohorts. It's very strict. The protocols around, uh, the CIAC, uh, coaches right now is very strict on what they can do with students. It's 10 students per coach. It's staggered. It's for X amount of time. It's, it's very, it's very structured. Uh, even with all that, they're talking, you know, they were talking at one point about having a, you know, having a later start to the season, you know, to the whole season, even to the, uh, the preseason. Now it looks like games may start a little bit later, but practices may be starting close to on time for most sports with the exception of fo- football that's being pushed, pushed back for now. And again, the football practice that would be starting at this point would not be, you know, 100 kids together. It would be, uh, working out in small, small cohorts of students until you get to that point where you can get, you know, the whole team together. And part of the feedback on that, my, my perspective on that, when I, when, when I addressed the committee, like, you know, it's hard enough. It's nearly impossible to cohort the kids at the high school. So, if we cannot have them, you know, all together, you know, before we even get into school, let's get into school first and then, um, see how things are going before we start doing that. But they have talked about, um, the, one of the proposals today too, and this is all premature. I think the CIAC is going to come out with their final decision on, on Thursday. Um, but it would include, um, probably starting contests a little bit later and ending contests a little bit earlier. Probably be finishing the fall season for all sports, um, you know, around, sometime around the end of November. Um, it, football usually goes, you know, a couple of weeks into December and the other sports, uh, a little bit earlier as well. And reducing the number of competitions. There, there's a lot of things being thrown around, uh, which is going to give, is going to create fits for our athletic directors because there's a lot of discussion around playing, instead of playing your conference games, they're going to play more regionally. And maybe you play, you know, you, you play, Monroe plays Newtown, Oxford, Trumbull. Uh, you know, Joe Barlow, that's an eastern, right? You, you play the, the bordering towns around you instead of going, getting on a bus for a long time and going to another place. But I think this, I think the CIAC is looking to have a decision made by, uh, by, by Thursday or so.
Okay, so if our health decision and our numbers stay low and we're going back to the full in-person, then there'll be modified sports.
Exactly.
That's a summary. Okay. And then I believe you said it earlier, if a parent elects to, um, distance learn, we're going to try and ask them to make those decisions quarter by quarter. Is that correct? So, they're not going back and forth day by day or week by week?
Exactly. Yeah, um, you know, we're going to ask people to commit to a quarter, you know, a quarter at a time if they're going to, if they're going to do it. Cause it, it'll get really disruptive if they, if they don't.
Absolutely.
I do know there was some guidance on, um, on the temporary remote learning option. If, if parents do do that, um, there's, their children are not allowed to play, uh, extra, you're not allowed to participate in extracurriculars, which makes sense.
Okay. And just, um, the last thing, um, to, to Jack, we'll have to have a conversation just about safety drills and all that stuff because that's going to flip us all around, uh, in the, in those requirements. So, we'll talk about that and I won't take up any more of your time. Thank you.
Thanks, Dave.
It's Christine. I, um, got texted one more question, so I just.
Sure, no problem. Go ahead.
Sorry. Um, the question, um, somebody asked me is about contact tracing, um, and HIPAA and privacy concerns. And what, um, student info will be recorded and who would it be shared with and is it kept electronically?
Dar, do you want to talk about contact tracing a little bit? I don't know if we have all the answers to that, but I know it would be a nurse supervisor, uh, question as well. Oh, you're on mute, Dar.
Sorry, I, can you hear me now?
Yep.
Okay. All right. So, as far as contact tracing is included, we, um, the, um, uh, Joanne Perrig, who is our nurse supervisor, has a ten, has been attending the nurse supervisor meetings. And they are, um, developing protocols for contact tracing and how that needs to be done. Um, it, all of the guidelines from the state say that we have, we have to, um, give the information to the parents if there is a case. Now, what we do the sa- we would do the same thing that we do with any, um, confidential information that we just kind of give to the general information that there, there has been a case in either the cohort or the building. And, um, you know, that, that all the precautions are, are, um, being taken and that we would keep the parents informed. Um, we do have a, uh, ser- um, an electronic service that is called SNAP that the nurses do input information. It's just like our, um, IP direct that we use for special education. If, um, information is input into there, but only certain people can get into it. So, um, it is ca- it is kept electronically, but, um, like I said, there, there are limited number of people who can get into it. Does that help?
Christine, does that answer that question?
Yeah, thank you. Sorry, yeah.
All right. I have, um, a question too that I just received, um, which is within regards to after-school activities. Um, so those activities that occur in our schools that are, excuse me, not school-related, but there are activities that people come in, sometimes there are our own school kids, but other times there are people from the outside that, um, book and use our school. Um, at this point, where, where's, what is our stance by the governor or ourselves on that?
Um, that's a, it's a great question and, you know, I'm, I'm going to say, uh, we are going to highly limit, if not eliminate, folks from coming in and using our, our schools. Um, you know, we're, we're going to be tasking our custodians who are, who are fantastic, um, with, you know, making sure these buildings are, are, uh, thoroughly cleaned every, every, every night. A lot of times they have to wa- work around organization, you know, organizations that, uh, may be using the building. So, you know, for the interim anyway, um, as we start the school year, um, we're going, we're going to, uh, you know, we're going to limit that and pretty much even with some of our extracurricular clubs and whatnot, you know, a lot, move a lot of that probably to Zoom as well, so we can have our, our staff go in and, and clean out. But outside organizations will probably not be able to use the, uh, will probably not be able to use the facilities very often. If, if at all, especially in the beginning.
Great, thank you so much. Um, well, that concludes our portion. We will now move on to public participation. Um, I do have the list and I want to just thank all, um, our parents out there who, um, did submit their names, um, to us, um, that wanted to make comments or ask questions. We may not, as Jill mentioned earlier, have all the answers this evening, um, for you, but we will certainly get those answers. As we've mentioned, everything is ever-changing. Um, you know, so what the answer may be today and two weeks from now, it could be completely something different. And I do apologize, um, I am not going to be able to pronounce some of these names, so I do appreciate. Um, don't get upset. I'm sorry. Some of them are, um, you know, I'm not sure of the pronunciation. So, I'm going to start. The first one is Marissa Salati. And if you just unmute and state in for all the people who, um, did ask to speak, if you just state your name and address for the record, um, and then you can go forth. Is Marissa on? All right. Justin in Georgia, Orlando. Is Justin in Georgia, Orlando on?
And Donna, can I just, can I just say something quick if?
Sure.
Yeah, we tried to make it, uh, um, clear to people. I, I hope it was, you know, in order to get everybody on, I know we have quite a few people on. I was afraid we were going to surpass our 500 limit, so we're, we're broadcasting this via, uh, via YouTube. So, if any of those folks are on YouTube, if they can go to the board agenda, which they can find on the district website and click into the Zoom link, that you can't participate from YouTube, um, you have to participate from the Zoom link, which, um, was, was sent out, uh, today as well.
Right. Um.
Orlando was on before. It doesn't look like they're meeting any longer, but.
All right, thank you. And maybe some people dropped. Uh, the next person on the list is Jillian Nemogat. All right, Wendy Hensel. Okay, um, Mark and Maria Rakkasas. And I'm sorry, I can't see all the participants, so I'm not sure who's on and who's not on. All right, Leanna M.
Hi, this is Leanna. I'm at 106.
Okay, Leanna, thank you.
So, I was wondering, is there a new STEM director?
Can you, can you just state your name and address? Sorry.
Sorry, Leanna, 106 Pastors Walk.
Uh, not, not at this time. Uh, not yet. That is something, we're meeting with the, um, Jack Chicalini and myself are meeting with the, uh, middle school, um, administration to talk about that. Uh, actually, I think we have a meeting on Thursday.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Elizabeth Maderas.
Elizabeth, 37 Squire Road. Um, thanks so much to everybody for all of your hard work and your transparency. It's really appreciated. Um, one question that I had is will you be providing some sort of training videos or some kind of day in the life for the students? What things will really be like to help parents prepare them, um, for all of the precautions that you're putting in place?
Yeah, absolutely. Uh, part of our, part of our plan, um, has, uh, training for both staff and for students. And the plan also has, you know, constant reinforcement of that. I, I imagine it'll be, you know, part of, you know, daily announcements every day at, you know, at some, at probably all levels. But yes, there will be, uh, there will be training for the, for the students and the staff, um, to go over, you know, hygiene protocols, health and safety, all of that.
Thanks, Joe.
You got it.
All right, Elizabeth, I'm sorry, Melanie Gompous. All right, we will move on. James Francois. All right, Stephanie Bellotti. All right, Adrian Jones. And I do see that name pop up.
Yes, hello.
A little muffled.
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Um, hold on, I'm trying.
It's better now.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes, just state your name and.
So, what's the number of, um, positive cases that would, in a school or in a classroom?
Excuse me, I just need you to. I'm sorry, I just need you to state your name and address for the record so that the, the recording secretary has that. Thank you, sorry.
That, that's right. No problem. Adrian Jones, 107 Far Horizon Drive. Um, my question is, what, um, what's the number of positive cases in a class or a team that would merit a shutdown? Have we thought about that or?
It's a great question, Adrian. And the, uh, as I, as I said a little bit earlier, the, uh, this, those are the guidelines that we're waiting to hear from the, uh, from the, um, from the Department of Public Health. But if we have a, if we have a positive case in a, uh, in a classroom, it would get shut down immediately. We'd be on, we would probably shut the school down, um, between two and five days a- at the minimum. And the reason for the two to five days was whatever it would be to get to the weekend and get to, get to the next week to deep clean the, uh, the building and then to engage the, the Department of Public Health to help us do the contact tracing and find out, you know, if it's safe enough to re- uh, to return back to the building.
Thank you.
Of course, thank you.
I did have one other question, if that's okay.
Yep, please.
What are your thoughts on working with, work, on working with kids that have sensory, uh, sensory issue, sensory issues, um, and not with their mask and struggling with, uh, keeping the mask on?
Yeah, I think we, we have, um, I had, as I stated earlier, we had our extended school year program. When, when we did have a certain, we had a limited number of children in who received some of their related services. We are, we do have training videos for students with sensory issues to be able to wear masks. Um, we, we were very successful with students who did come into our summer school program and we helped them to, you know, keep it on for five minutes, keep it on for 10 minutes. And, um, and they were very successful with keeping the masks on. Um, so we will work with those students and, and hopefully be able to get them to, um, you know, be able to sustain that for the time period that they're in, they're in the building. They're all, also in the plan, you know, there, there is a plan for sin, um, for mask breaks. Um, none of us like to wear masks all day long. So, you know, students will, there will be times when they can, um, have mask breaks and hopefully that, um, many of those times can be outdoors.
It's a great, it's a great question, Adrian. You know, for, obviously for those students with, with sensory needs. Uh, but even for all students, what, you know, one of the things we're, we're going to ask is, uh, you know, for parents to try to start getting kids, especially students who, who may not be, um, too used to wearing masks at, at this point yet. Um, you know, over the next month to start trying to acclimate them to that as well. So, it makes the transition to school a little bit easier. But it's a great question.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Uh, Adriana Angel. Okay, on, and I'm going to mess this one up. And Jana Sharma. Okay, Cheryl Taylor. All right, Audra Santos.
Um, you've answered all my questions. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you so much. Jen Tawani.
Hi, yes, you got it.
Great, thank you. Just name and address first, please.
Yep, Jen Tawani, 18 Manor Drive. So somebody had just asked about a day in the life video for students to help prep them. Is that something that could be made ahead, available ahead of time to help us make our decisions? Like I have twin third graders and I'm just wondering, you know, how often are they, or how much of the day is going to be spent just sitting at their desk? And not being able to get up and move around and, you know, I saw some of the schedules and I understand that mask breaks are going to be worked in, but it would be nice to have an idea of what a day would really look like for them.
Thanks, Jen. Yeah, I know, I know we've, we're doing some of that video work already with some of the grades, but we'll make sure that it's, that we hit something for all of the grades. I believe some of the, some of the schools have already done some of that to share with families.
Okay, I mean, even just elementary, like I, you know, I don't think you would need to do one for every elementary grade, but, you know, just an idea. And then as far as distant learning, distance learning goes, I was impressed with what was pulled together in the spring, but I know that some parents who I've talked to have had, had teachers who were not as involved with distant learning and, you know, there's just some curiosity around, is there going to be, you know, more, I guess, expectations? I mean, I understand this is something that nobody knew what to do or how to do it, but will there be more consistency across the board?
Sheila, do you want to, Sheila, do you want to address that a little bit with teaching and learning?
Yes, we're definitely going to be meeting with the teachers between those, we've got the three PD days already scheduled and then we're asking shortly to have the board approve to give us the extra three, so that way we can work on consistency between classrooms and across. It's also a conversation with the union on the amount of synchronous learning that will happen within a school day at the different grade levels. So there's a lot of things that we still have to work out, but we are definitely looking at having consistency across grade levels.
Okay. And even if you're not in the hybrid model, if people choose to keep their students home, will they still be trying to do something similar to what you were discussing earlier with having a Google Classroom set up and having everybody kind of be learning the same content, even if it's not the same delivery?
Yes. Yep, that's what that, if, if parents choose to do that, you know, temporary voluntary remote learning, there will be, you know, expectations. We will have a teacher who will be overseeing it. It may not be the classroom teacher had they been assigned in the classroom, because it may be, it may be a teacher who is doing distance learning. And that's, they're actually physically not in the building. So it might look a little different, but there will be a teacher assigned to students who are doing that voluntary remote learning.
Is distant learning, you know, choosing, parents choosing to do distance learning, is that something that helps the school district overall with having lower numbers? Or is that something that hurts with having a whole bunch of different expectations and responsibilities?
I don't know that it hurts us. You know, we will be meeting the students and supporting them in their educational process, whether they're in person, whether we're hybrid, or whether the parent chooses to do the voluntary remote learning. You know, it's just a matter of us. We are going to have some teachers who for various reasons will not, you know, be doing the in-person. So those teachers will be looking at to do some of this remote learning.
Okay. And last question. If a, if, when a vaccine gets released, is that going to be mandatory? If, you know, it's not mandatory, if my kids get a vaccine, are they going to still have to wear masks in the school? Has there been any discussion around how that will look?
There has not. And I'd have to say that would, we would have to get our medical advisor. We'd have to get his input on that to find out, you know, what we would have to do.
Okay. All right, that's it. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. We will move on to Terry. Dee, I'm not going to pronounce this, Terry D. All right, I did have, before we move on to the next person, I did have a text come through and somebody asked about face shields. Are they acceptable instead of a mask, or is that in addition to a mask?
In addition to. We will have, we will have face masks, but they'll be in addition to.
Great, thank you. The next speaker is Steve Winkle. All right, we will move on to Darren Cummings.
All right. Let's have it unmute. I'm here.
Okay, thank you.
Talbot Hill Court, Monroe. I want to thank everybody. It's a late night, it's about 10 o'clock. Jack, we are going to miss you in the middle school, but congratulations. One of the questions I had is you're working on mitigating strategies and there's a survey that went out to which staff was returning. What is the school district doing to see how many staff members had, have or had had COVID? And if they're not bringing you into the school system in five weeks? Or is there any testing? Is there any objectivity as to the staff that are concerned to not come back? Whether they're going to have negative testing before they return?
At this point, Darren, no, we have not, we have not talked about testing staff.
So there's no guarantee that staff may not bring the COVID into two weeks before school and possibly, because we're concerned about the students, but the staff may bring it in.
I hear you.
And I think that's why we're asking students and staff to self-assess. And if they have, if they have any symptoms, we, you know, the state and, and the, you know, the district is asking them to stay home until, you know, their symptom, they either see a doctor, their symptoms go away and it, and it hasn't escalated. So, you know, that, that's the recommendation in the guidelines right now for, for staff members and students to self-assess.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Darren.
All right, we will, the next person is Abraham Nevis.
Yes, hi, Abraham Nevis, 18 Mellon Patch Lane. I, you know, I got, I got a young one going in for kindergarten and as educators, I just wanted to ask you guys, what, what is best for us? Should we hold back a year or should we send the kid to school this year?
I mean, I would, I would absolutely say send, send him to school this year. I wouldn't want to see them left behind, you know, as a result of this. So I would suggest sending them in.
That's, that's my thought also. I just didn't know if it was best, you know. But thank you for your...
Can I, could I interject something here as a, as a secretary for a second? Because we're in such a, is that okay, Donna?
All right, what?
Okay, just the whole, for the public participation. We're in uncharted times and there's like a lot of questions and there, this is the communication we were talking about that we want. The highlighted piece of the, of the public participation is just like immediate replies to questions, concerns should not be expected. And that's just because they're really on the spot with, with a lot of questions and all new territory here. So some of the, I don't know, I'm just saying, we might have to write some questions down and get back to people and things like that. We might not know all the answers tonight.
Thanks, Jenna.
Thank you. All right, we will move on. Teresa Oliar.
Sorry, took me a second to unmute. Teresa Oliar, my address is 133 Old Castle Drive. I really just wanted to thank everybody who did all the hard work on, well, let me take a step back. I was a parent rep on the reopening committee, so I want to preface it by saying I am not thanking myself. Who I want to thank is all of our administrators, our teachers, our nurses, our paras, our custodial staff, our tech staff, all the people that are going above and beyond their job that they already do to put in all these hours. I was a volunteer, I was happy to do it. And to be honest, I didn't have a lot of other things going on and I missed all of my meetings. That being said, I have to say that everybody, all the members of the reopening committee that are on the meeting tonight possess a patience that is tremendous and far greater than anything I possess personally. You guys are all sitting here until now, it's almost, I mean, 10 o'clock at night, answering so many questions, and many from our Board of Ed members, which is completely understandable for those who are not on the committee. But I really just wanted to make a brief comment that I do find it disappointing that there were many questions from some BOE members who had volunteered to be on the reopening committee, had volunteered to volunteer their time over the summer, which is commendable, but then did not follow through with their commitment, did not show up to the full committee or subcommittee meetings, nor do they pass it along to another Board of Ed member if they could, for some unforeseeable reason, no longer be able to serve on that committee. And so I thank everybody on the reopening committee for answering many questions that we had had answered and discussed at length, week after week, meeting after meeting, subcommittee after subcommittee meeting. And I just, I find it disappointing and I think that the public should know that, because if in three weeks or four weeks or five weeks, our Board of Ed says, hey, Joe, we didn't know this, we didn't know to expect this, we didn't, whatever. I just think that if we, if they were fully invested in the reopening committee as they had volunteered to, it wouldn't be the case. So thank you again to everybody who has put in so many hours to the reopening committee for this plan for Monroe to move forward during this pandemic.
Thank you. Just to, just to follow through with that, a lot of the questions that the board is asking is questions that we know are on the minds of parents in our community. So as we may know the answers to some of those questions, we're asking them because we're getting questions, but we're also asking them that, so those are things that may not, may be missed. So as the committee knows, board members know, a lot of our parents don't know and our community don't know. So we're trying to, some of us be very proactive in getting those questions out so that it clears up a lot of confusion for our community and understanding those dynamics of what the opening is. All right, since that is all I have on my list as people who, go ahead, Jill, I'm sorry.
You just said Adriana Angel sent me a chat this, her microphone's not working. I don't think I have, I don't think I have an answer for her, but her question was, she wanted to know what the plan is for kids with underlying medical conditions. I imagine it's something that we can address. I imagine the, the short answer is, it would have, we'd have to look at it on a case-by-case basis.
Great, thank you. I am going to, just in case there are parents out there who missed the deadline. We are running late, but if there is a parent that would like to ask a question and make a comment, I will indulge that for a couple of minutes, because the protocol was really to submit it ahead of time. But I know there's not many people on, so if you do, please unmute your microphone and state your name and address for the record.
Yes, I'd like to talk. My name is Nina Gagnon, 160 Pepper Street. I want to clarify or get some clarification on if people are deciding to do distance learning, whether it's a hybrid or full instruction environment, how is that going to look in the classrooms and the assignments for the students? For instance, come first day of school, one teacher might have half their kids learning from home. Another class might have 80% of their kids learning from home. Some might have no kids learning from home. Is, is that going to be equitable learning between those classes? Or is there going to be a dedicated teacher per grade or per school that is the teacher for distance learning students?
I'll let Sheila jump in a little bit on this. I, right now, it's a little premature to say that, you know, it's really going to depend on, on the survey results we get back from students and, students and staff. I don't know, Sheila, do you want to add to that a little bit?
Well, I just want to clarify. So the distance learning would be that everybody would be in distance learning or everybody would be in a hybrid where half the class is in the school building and half the class is home. Then there's a third option where parents who choose not to send their child for in-person school and are just asking for the voluntary remote learning. So there's, so is that the one that you're speaking to?
Well, would the voluntary remote learning be, would they, those students be assigned to a classroom where they're going in school all the time or even a hybrid? Or are they going to be separated out to a different teacher?
I think, as Joe said, it's a little premature to say exactly what that's going to look like because we're still getting survey data. One of the recommendations from the State Department of Education was for the voluntary students, if you have teachers who are, for whatever reason, requesting to be teaching remotely, they could be assigned to the class of students who are doing the voluntary remote learning. So, but that's not a definitive. We, you know, we may be assigning those students to classrooms and instead of coming in for two days and being home for two, two days, they'd be home for all four. So that, those are the logistical pieces that we have not quite ironed out yet.
Okay. I just wanted to kind of get an idea.
Sure. I'm sorry, I can't be more clear, but it's...
No, it's, it's okay. I know it's, it's early on and everything and everything is changing. I totally get it.
Hi, this is Christina Marini and I apologize if this question's already been addressed. I missed a little bit of the meeting, but...
Can you just state your address for the record, please?
Yeah, Gerardo Drive. So early on, when this all started in March, obviously you guys had to quickly assemble and do what was necessary to quickly, you know, assemble the distance learning model. However, with parents that are both working and not able to be present as much as they would need to, either physically or in the home, for those that are working from home, what's the plan to have more of the live interaction sessions for the distance learning so that it's more interactive with teachers' teaching and less with the parents having to provide that structure for their children?
Sorry, Joe.
We could go back to like the, I don't know, the, there's, there's a lot of the, the whole public participation comments, which is in the agendas, you know, we, it's, it's a chance for everybody to speak and to communicate. We don't know all the answers right now and I know this piece was covered earlier to some extent, but I'll let you continue. But I just wanted to reiterate that we're not expected to, to respond to everything. No, that's not, that's not typically how we do it.
Yeah, no, and I understand that. I just think that as we get, you know, we're three weeks out, right, when we think about curriculum and the need to pivot very quickly, right? So at this point, it could be, you know, full, you know, full in-person learning with the precautions or a hybrid model. The hybrid calls for three days of distance learning. So I think that the school is probably at this point, you know, preparing plans in terms of what those lessons would be, what the streaming would be from a, you know, video conferencing perspective. I mean, that has to have had been discussed at this point with several months into the planning process. So I would just like to understand if there's going to be more of that and less of the hands-on with the parents doing it, right? So I know for me, for example, my child who was in kindergarten, I think there was one, one-hour Zoom class a week. I would imagine that there would be a lot more of that, you know, interaction with the teachers come the three-day distance learning, so that there's less burden on the parents who really don't have the ability to distance learn or are working full-time.
Yeah, we will be working on getting more specifics for that and once it's clarified, it will be different across the grade levels. it will be different across the grade levels. So elementary may look different than middle school and high school and in certain content areas in high school as well, too. So as we get that information, that will be shared out with parents.
Great, thank you. And then back to the, the earlier question about testing teachers prior to coming into the school. What's the school's position on those that may not be symptomatic but have had direct primary exposure with someone that has tested positive for COVID-19? I know according to the CDC guidelines, primary exposure to someone that's tested positive for COVID-19, you know, their recommendation would be a quarantine for that individual. I just wanted to make sure that that was part of the self-assessment process as well in terms of perhaps they're not symptomatic, but they've been exposed, therefore increasing the risk that, you know, they could be infected as well.
And that is one of the questions on the self-assessment.
Okay, great. Thank you so much.
Yes, hi. I'd like to ask a question if that's possible.
Yes, name and address, please, for the record.
Yes, my name is Casey Matyskiewicz, and my address is 39 Willenbarb Road. I had a quick question. I was listening to the meeting the entire time, and I thank you guys for taking the time to answer everybody's questions here at the end. Somebody had said something about that if a parent chooses to opt out of option one or option two for your school plans and does the distance learning, that children are not allowed to participate in any extracurricular activities. My question is, I have a sixth grader, and she plays an instrument in the band. Will she be able to still participate in band, or is that one of those extracurricular activities?
I think band is, is part of the curriculum if you're, if you're taking band class, so that would be a little bit different.
Okay, all right. I was just concerned because, you know, we rent an instrument, and we already went through the process of re-renting that instrument, and I didn't want her to miss out on something that she truly loves. So I appreciate that.
Yeah, as a band's parent, if I can answer that, I have a sophomore in high school who has played a band instrument since fifth grade. All bands, music and chorus classes are actually part of the curriculum and are graded classes, so not be done after school or before school. That's actually done as a class during the school day.
Okay, thank you very much. That, that is the answer I wanted to hear.
No problem. You're very welcome.
Have a good night, everybody.
You too. Thank you. Anybody else have anything else before we move on to our agenda meeting? Anybody else want to participate in public participation?
I had a quick question.
Sure, Nick, name and address for the record, please.
Trina Dezon, 229 Van Hill Road. I had a quick question just because I know the scenario, one for it's a full, it's a full attendance. If it's a full attendance and you're still doing distance, I mean, social distancing in the classroom, I don't, I can't even picture kids, a full classroom with social distancing. Like, how, how are you, like, I know you're individually putting the desk, so each desk are separated, and then the, the bigger desk might be, you'll have the, the Plexiglas. But how many kids, I guess, are you putting into each classroom if it's called a full classroom?
That's going to depend on, that's going to depend on the grade level and the courses. So we, there is no, there is no set number, and I, in full transparency, you know, we are going to, you know, the whole idea is to maximize social distancing, and that's what we're going to do, so. But I'm not going to, you know, I would be lying if I said, you know, it's going to be, you know, in some cases, it could be six feet, in other cases, it may not be six feet.
Okay.
But it's, I can't give you, the class size is going to depend on a number of factors, you know. Not the least of which is, you know, how many kids decide, you know, that they may opt for the temporary remote learning.
Okay. And then I have one more question, and it's more about kind of, I know they're having, they have masks on, and my kids are fairly used to the mask, but they're still not really, they don't necessarily know how to put on the mask themselves properly. Is that something that the teachers will be expected to do? And will there also be a protocol as far as like making sure they wash their hands before they touch the other student's mask to help them put it on or things like that?
That, so that will all be covered in our, in our training for both staff and for students.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Got it.
Great, thank you. Anybody else?
I have one question. Marissa Steve, 35 Meadowbrook Drive. I have an incoming kindergartner, an incoming fourth-gunder, and I am a teacher at Masick. So I just wanted to firstly say thank you for everything that everyone has done to kind of put my nerves at ease for sending myself and my children back to school. I think, Darlene, this question goes to you. If someone in one of the kids' classes is sent home with symptoms that day, I think it said like, is the cohort automatically home for those three to five days or not until that student has a positive test?
We haven't, we haven't really finalized, you know, what the, what the protocol is going to be because it has changed already, Marissa. You know, we, for E S Y, we, Jen and I had decided that, you know, if we, if we did have anybody with symptoms, we were just going to shut down because it's such a short period of time. But I know that other, other districts that had, you know, positive cases or symptoms, they did shut down for those two to five days so that you can assess and decide whether you really need to quarantine that cohort or not. So it may be that, you know, you're, if they're in, if, if we're on a hybrid model and they're in, you know, Cohort A and, and somebody has symptoms, we, you know, we can, we can close it down for two to five days. But now, one of the other factors, which is quickly changing too, is that you, you can, you can go to some places and get that quick test. And if we call a parent and say, you know, "Call your doctor", the doctor sends the kid for a test and it comes back that, that, you know, they don't have it, then we, we wouldn't have to, you know, necessarily be closed for those two to five days. It's, it's going to be on a case-by-case basis.
Thank you.
All right, anybody else?
Donna, it's a little years again. Just one suggestion, if I, if I could. In the next survey, could we potentially ask parents, if the quality of education were equal, would they keep their child home or send them? Because in the last survey, I, I remember hearing about a lot of people being confused and unsure how to answer the question, "Would you send your child to school today?" And I think that's because it was like, well, if given the chance between distance learning as we know it and school as we know it, you know, that, that's a different question, I think. So if you followed up with that, I think you, you might get a little bit better, you know, response and more clear responses.
Great, thank you so much. All right, anybody else, or we will move on now? Great, we will be moving on. So we have no old business this evening on our agenda, so we will be moving on to new business. And item A is approval of our 2020-21 rates and fee schedule, tuition fees and facility use fees, and we have a vote anticipated. Joe, are you going to put this up on the screen?
Sure.
Great, so we have, everybody sees the schedule. Do I have a motion to approve, as this Joe is putting this on the screen, the schedule?
Nick Gabor so moved.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it, Donna.
Thank you, Jerry. So I have a motion by Nick, a second by Jerry. And this is the fee schedule. If everybody remembers, every year we need to vote on what the lunch program, what the cost of, you know, what were the kids pay for the lunches. We vote on all of the fees, you know, things like massive parking. If somebody wants to use our facility, what the cost is for a facility. Now, some of these may not come into play. This year, if we're limiting or eliminating all outside groups for coming in, but, you know, you can see, you know, what those are. Joe, did you want to talk about any of this? Has anything drastically changed, or Ron maybe wants to talk about this? Maybe it's Ron better?
Yeah, there's no drastic changes. And Ron could jump in if I, if I miss any. The one that we had talked about during, you know, during the budget preparation was the increase in the surcharge, $50 for athletics. And then the only other, I wouldn't even necessarily call it significant, but to your point, the, I'm trying to find out what it is. The, the rates for custodial overtime increased just to reflect the salary increases of those, of our custodians. So if an organization uses our facilities, again, and I hope we have these, I hope we have to worry about this at some point in the very near future, but, you know, if an outside facility uses our, our, our facilities, then, you know, these are the rates that would apply to them. And this just increased a few dollars for overtime. I think those are the big ones. Ron, am I missing anything?
No, I think you got them all, Joe. Did, did you touch on the, the tuition?
Uh, no, I didn't, Ron, no. We capped that off at 18,000. We increased that by the, by the same percentage that the budget, of the budget increase. Is that correct, Ron?
Mm-hmm, correct.
Great, thank you. So I will just go around for questions. George?
No, no questions. Thank you, Donna.
All right, Jerry?
No questions. Thank you.
Shannon?
No questions.
Alan?
No question.
Nick?
All set.
Dave?
No, nothing.
Jeff?
No questions.
And Christine?
No questions.
All right, I'm hearing none. Then I have a motion by Nick, a second by Jerry. All in favor? George?
Aye.
Jerry?
Aye.
Shannon?
Aye.
Alan?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Nick?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Christine?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Motion passes. Thank you. We will move on to item B, which is approval of revisions to the 2020-21 school calendar, and I have a vote anticipated on this. Do I have a motion to make the changes to the school calendar as proposed? Thank you, Nick. Do I have a sec? Okay, and I'll take Christine that time because I heard her, so Nick and Christine. Joe, would you, I know you've already touched on some of these items, but if you could walk through all the changes to the calendar, I'd appreciate it.
You got it. And Jack, if I miss anything, please jump in. So as I said earlier, the 24th, 25th, and 26th were already scheduled professional development days. The state of Connecticut has issued a waiver to all districts. As you remember, we were already down from 182 to 180 student days because of the, the furlough days that were agreed to. So the state waiver allowed districts to go from 180 days to 177 days, provided that they allowed for professional development in the beginning of the year before students arrived. We think this time is incredibly, I mean, obviously, after all the conversation tonight, and there's so much more work that needs to be done, that this is going to be critical time for our, our staff. So we are looking for the 27th, 28th, and 31st of August to also be professional development days. So our students would now start on September 1st. And as I discussed before, we really want to try to acclimate our students to the new, the new normal, at least, if we're in, if we're in class or for those students that are in class, this first week of, this first four days of school would serve as half day, as early dismissal days. I'll call them half days because they're about two hours shorter. But early dismissal for students, that also allows staff to make any adjustments, you know, meet with their colleagues, collaborate as grade levels, whatever needs to be done as, you know, as we continue to work our way through the beginning of the year. So 177 days, the first four days being half days. This is much in line with a lot of other districts that are doing, you know, you know, kind of slowly acclimating kids back in. Another change on this calendar is the, is the September 18th, it will be a full day of school as proposed, or as opposed to a day off. It was initially going to be the offer Rosh Hashanah. I actually got feedback from, from people actually even in, in the Jewish community that reminded me that Rosh Hashanah doesn't start until sundown of that evening. So much in line. We checked all the other districts. There's only one other district near us that is observing this day for Rosh Hashanah. So with everything else going on, we thought it would be good to, you know, this would technically be our first full week of school. So we'd be going to school on the 18th. All the other changes were discussed at the, at the last, at the last meeting. The 15th would actually be, March 15th would be a day off. That was one of the, one of the furlough days. And with everything else, the last day of school would technically now, as it, as it sits, as it sits, would be June 7th.
Great. Does anybody have any questions for Joe? And Joe, just a quick question. There's no guidance from the state as to what happens on, let's say, a snow day. If we're in school, do we go remote and do those counts? Or is it just the same as it's always been where it's a day off and you make it up in, in the end of the year?
No guidance yet from them. You know, it seems to make sense that if we are in a position where, you know, if we're in a hybrid or something that, you know, we might be able to, to do that. But there's been no, the, the state is not, has not made any decision yet on custodians. They've made no changes on custodians as of right now.
Right, thank you. George, any questions?
No questions.
Jerry?
No.
Shannon?
No, just confirming, the first day of school is now September 1st with this, with this vote anticipated, September 1st.
Yes. Alan?
No questions.
Dave?
No questions, but I say, snow days, we just make distance learn. We just announce them as distance learn days, and we, we make the decision, and then the state can fight us later. That's all.
Nick?
Very briefly, Joe, did we decide that the high, in the hybrid, the days are the days, right? So like, the first week, the first full week, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, Cohort A is only coming in on eight, and it's not shifting?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's, that's what we've been talking about. Now, whether that evolves over the next few weeks, you know, we'll, we'll take a look at it. Because there are, you know, if you, as you look over the course of the year, you know, there tends to be probably a few more Mondays off than, than other days. But there are some Thursdays and Fridays that are off here as well.
I just got that question texted to me, and someone said, "Well, when July 4th is on a Monday, and your garbage is, you put your garbage out on a Monday, you put it out on Tuesday." I go, what, this is not, we're not doing that. It's the days of the week or the days of the week. So I think in a hybrid, should we open in a hybrid, that the scheduling is going to be super, super critical, as you know.
That's a great question because I'm sure that that is a question that some parents are going to have if they are exposed to, in a hybrid, if they're in school Monday, but Monday is a, you know, a holiday and a day off, what, what happens? Thank you. Jeff?
No questions.
And Christine?
No questions.
Great. So I have a motion to revise the 2020-21 school calendar as presented. We will just go around for a vote. George? Did we lose George? All right. Oh, George is, well, George is there. He must have stepped away. Jerry?
Aye.
Shannon?
Aye.
Alan?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Nick?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Christine?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. George, I don't see is there. George? Okay, so motion passes. Before we move on to adjournment, I wanted to take this opportunity. I don't know if Joe is going to do that. Jake Greenwood, who I hope is still on the call. This is his last meeting and also his last meet, week before he departs for Richfields High School to take over the principalship there. So on behalf of at least the Board of Education, I'll let Joe speak for Joe and the school district. We wanted to just thank Jake for your two years of leadership at Massey High School. We appreciate everything you've done and we wish you and your family well. I hope you will come back and visit us sometime. And thank you for being a part of our community for the past two years and good luck.
Thanks, Donna. You know, you definitely hit it in the head. I'm glad I could, I'm glad I could be something. You know, Jake has been a great addition and I wish, I wish he could stay longer. My comments, when the superintendent in Richfield asked about him, I said, he's the real deal. I should have lied, I should have said something bad, but, you know, he's, he's done some really great things at the high school. And, you know, as the, as a former high school principal, one of the things I wanted was, you know, you know, who has some new fresh ideas that can do some stuff? And, you know, there were some things that Jake did over the last two years. I just scratched my head, I'm like, why didn't I think of that? You know, just really good ideas, really, really has done a nice job. I really appreciate all the work he's done. You know, one of the things that I think speaks so, so highly to his character is, you know, Jake informed me, it was a couple of days before graduation, you know, that he was the finalist in Richfield. And, you know, I knew he was going to be out. I, I spoke to the superintendent there and asked if he would, you know, if we could keep him on. I knew, you know, they had their own reopening situation. And, you know, it would have been very easy for lesser man, I should say, to have had, you know, one foot out the door the whole time. And I got to be honest with you, Jake has been committed to this district all the way to the end. And, you know, he sent me a text probably last night, you know, is there anything I can do for you, what do you need? You know, he knows how overwhelming this is. I know how overwhelming it is for everyone at the schools. So for him to still have that level of commitment all the way up to his last day is, it speaks, it speaks volumes of his character. I wish, I wish Jake the best. He's a good man and it's a small state. I hope our paths cross again.
Jake, anything you want to say? You're on mute.
I was unmuting. I honestly, really unexpected, so just that, thank you so much. I appreciate it. I've enjoyed every minute of it and honestly, it's been everyone, the community and the, and the kids and the administration board have been just fantastic to work with. And so I agree with Joe, it's a small state and, you know, you never, you never know. So, but thank you so much, unexpected and really appreciate it. So thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, if nobody has anything else, we will move on to adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn? I see Jeff waving his hands, I have a second. I see Nick. All right, I'm going to say there's no discussion, so we'll just go around. George? He was just there.
I'm good.
So aye, adjournment, aye. Shannon?
Aye.
Jerry?
Aye.
Alan?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye, and thank you, everybody, for three hours of hanging with us. Appreciate it.
Yes. Nick?
It feels like we're back in budget. Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Christine?
Aye.
Great, thank you. I know it was a very long meeting, but I think that there was a lot of questions asked by our parents in our community that nearly needed to be answered. So I appreciate everybody hanging in there for the three hours. And we will probably have another meeting probably in a week or two. And I'm sure things will have changed by then. So thank you so much.